Oh, I'll grab it.
Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
How you doing? 14/16 is the one thing I want to talk about. So do I get to talk when it's the time? Oh, really? Okay.
Thank you. At this moment, councilors, I would like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor De Peña.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Present.
Counselor Abdu.
Present.
Counselor Almonte.
Here.
Counselor Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
Council Vice President LaPlante.
Present.
And Council President Vasquez.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Councilors, can I please get a motion to approve a set of minutes from November 17th, 2015, December 1st, 2015, and December 15th, 2015?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor to approve the set of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Councilors, moving on to public participation. The first person is H. Malley.
Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaigned promise of safe Lawrence only possible U.S. or elected official and Mayor Rivera support of our police department and their senior officers' union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers, and support their union. Our city has become great city because of our hard-working DPW workers, a few workers, and the best leadership. We, the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our DPW workers in the collective bargaining negotiation. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrificed their safety so our citizen be safe. We, the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our firefighters and their union. Our public school with the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh is moving forward. Turnaround plan has created more Level 1 school, more higher school graduate. Our children, they have hope. Our teachers and their union must know our citizen are behind them and support them. In the next two years of this election, we, the citizen, demand of you move Lawrence forward for support our police officers and their union and our DPW workers. Thank you.
Next person on the list is Councilor Modesto Maldonado.
Mr. President and members of the council, at our first meeting, my rights as a duly-elected member of this council was violated when the president chose not to recognize me to participate in a discussion which this council was having. I hope that it was an oversight and that this will not happen again because, again, I am a duly-elected member of this council and I have the right to be recognized like any other member. Second, the rules were changed for public participation without the approval of this council, and I hope that you can, Mr. President, you can put him in the agenda for proper discussion to change the rules and procedures in public participation. Third, it is my personal opinion that the fact that three city councils were being tried to be kept out of committees was done with malice intent. I understand that you, Mr. President, has the power to appoint to the committees, but obviously to isolate three members of this council to participate in committees is totally unfair, and I believe it's been done with malice, and I hope that this will be corrected. Thank you.
Next person on the list is Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Dick Russell. I reside 34 Cross Street in the city. First of all, I would like to commend four of you for staying awake for the two-hour committee of the whole meeting. I was one of the two private citizens that sat through the January 6th reenactment of the McCarthy hearings of some 60 years ago that were basically a witch hunt, very similar to the Committee of the Whole Inquisition on salaries and stipends. There were three of you questioning policies and procedures on salaries and stipends of various unnamed city employees. First, public participation rules prevent me from mentioning councilors by name, so I'll have to let their own guilt if they have any, remind them of who I speak. 2010 council, two of you were on the council, and it didn't seem to bother you with some of the employment antics of our previous mayor. 2012, one of you were on the council again, and again silence. 2014 council, three of you were silent for the first year. Then, 2015, several of you started pulling a rustle, stirring things up, the mayor's executive actions, the residency rule requirement, supplemental budget amongst other things. I ask you a question that will probably fall on deaf ears, as you probably consider it ancient history. How come you rubber-stamped the former mayor's appointments of various individuals? How could you allow the former mayor, excuse me, to appoint two of his office gatekeepers' jobs, to jobs as foreman in the DPW, jobs which I understand are union position, which means it is virtually impossible to remove them from their jobs? I heard no complaints when one of them, one of these individuals received a sizable stipend for being a tree expert. Again, all the citizens of Lawrence heard from several of you, councilors, was crickets. I don't expect any of you to complain about the cost of police overtime to protect the vault that contained the first recall petitions filed by a group that refuses to comply with mass OCPF rules. You know what it costs the taxpayers? Eighty-two-hundred-seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. Where are we going to get this money? I guess that's as good as a housewarming president, as the chairman of the budget and finance is going to receive. Let him worry about it. With that, as always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next person in line is Joseph Tamico.
Joseph Tamico, 11 Lorenzo Road. I was here last meeting, and the president made the correct call of making a person go back at the end of the line. According to the city council in 1998, when public participation was reinforced again, the president can make any changes. There was a president that turned around and made the first person in line to the back of the line, and both of, and he was a Lawrence resident. And again, I went through eight years of meetings, verb for verb. Calls 30 minutes for public participation, then it has to stop. So if there's 100 people going up, 30 minutes is maximum, according to the city council paper. No debating of issues. And the only time is subject to change only by the full council at a regular scheduled city council meeting. So someone has to put it on the agenda. The other reason why I'm here is I just wanted to commend the police department. I had to call them at 2:00 in the morning for a noise violation. Cruiser came in six minutes, so the people, the city police department does respond when they, when you call, as long as you're nice, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the line is Mr. James Patrick O'Donohue.
Good evening, councilors. When I was here at the last meeting, it was mentioned that the Personnel Committee was going to hear 14/16, and I looked up on the website, and the schedule for that meeting, according to the website, would have been today and not when it was, actually. So I missed out on that, so I'm hoping that when that comes up, I will have the opportunity to speak on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving on to public hearings. Document 23915, aggressive panhandling ordinance. It was placed on the agenda by James Fitzpatrick, our police chief. Mr. Clerk.
Document 239, 2015, notice is hereby given to the city council. We'll hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 19th, 2016, in council chambers, 200 Commons Street, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony information and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding a new chapter to section, being section 12.32 prohibiting, prohibition of aggressive begging, soliciting, and panhandling in public places to be inserted in proper order. The proposed ordinance is entitled prohibition of aggressive begging, soliciting, and panhandling in public places, with other subsections included, as stated in the advertisement published in full on the city website in advance of this hearing, to the extent there exists any other city ordinances of the contrary that are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Anyone in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Mr. A.
Good evening, honorable members. H. Malley, 53 Chester Street. As a citizen of the city more than 30 years, as have been recognized last few years, increasing numbers of the panhandling. The reason has been, maybe has in relation between using drugs or being poor, but increasing the members of these people that stand, you know, around our city asking for money, many of the citizens, because of the kindness of their heart, they help these people, many of them, they don't help, what has created the nexus between these people, the money that collect from our public in using drugs. We don't know that. This issue has been challenged in many different cities because bringing these people to the court for panhandling also created judicial bad law. Also, there is not going to be any proof that these people using this money for the drugs, so the issue has been ever-increasing. As you travel to different neighboring cities, the issue of the panhandling has been very aggressively by police department in different cities. We need have to do something about panhandling, but we don't know if there is a nexus between the panhandling and money collected for using illicit drugs. It's time that this council takes such action as proper for 2016 without violating the constitutional law and civil right of these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wants to speak? Please identify yourself.
Joshua Alba, 110 Name Street. We're living in an increasing politically repressive state here in Lawrence, thanks to state and federal austerity. Popular culture and business as usual in our political, public, and private institutions. I'm talking about the continuing ethos of treating groups of people as disposable in a quest for a more favorable image of our city to outside investors, the sole focus on data and not public health, but profit. For example, in this proposal, are we paying mind to the 200 or 300 workers from Politek that will soon find themselves jobless and possibly on our streets begging for money to try to feed their families and make ends meet? Is there an effort to take that factory and put it in public hands, support the workers, create cooperatives so they could keep their jobs? Or are we here to simply punish the unfortunate and criminalize the poor? Public health, that is drug usage, depression, psychosis, violence, is directly proportional to the social economy, specifically how government cares or does not care for the people it has the responsibility to care for. Instead of criminalizing drug users, where are the supports to provide economic opportunity so they don't pick up needles from depression of not having work? Where is the public support to build shelters for homeless panhandlers who live under our bridges and abandoned buildings so as to not have to resort to harassment? Are we so rooted in the language of violence that all we can muster is more apathy, more isolation, and more hatred and fear in the name of public safety? There are viable, effective, and long-term solutions to this problem that can contribute to the improvement of all of our lives here in Lawrence. They mostly only require the courage, collaboration with the community, and vision of the leadership to see it through. If this ordinance passes, shame on us for not being able to care for the least of us. Shame on us for selling out. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Name's still Dick Russell, still live at Cross, 34 Cross Street. If I'm not mistaken, the State Supreme Court blew down another panhandling ordinance. I'm not sure if it was Lowell or if it was Worcester's. I think it would be a good idea for you just to table this, throw it upstairs to the city's legal eagle, let him wonder if the viability of a panhandling ordinance, try to get something that is going to pass the sniff test as opposed to another lawsuit which we don't need. Thank you.
Good evening, James Fitzpatrick, Chief of Police. If you indulge me, we would, myself, after consultation with the mayor and the city attorney, would respectfully request to withdraw the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience wishes to speak? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your wish?
I want to be, withdraw the item.
Motion to withdraw has been made and properly second. A discussion?
Discussion.
Councilor Almonte.
Thank you. I actually, if I could approach the podium, I have somebody here from the city who, what I can talk on this? We have some data. It's just some data that was collected that would follow up on this so that when we do put this together, we actually know what the status is and the service that have been taken, and I'm going to have her, this is information packets that, sorry.
What are these packets?
These packets, Evelyn will explain at the moment. It's just surveys and information that we have about the homelessness, the drug addiction, and the opiates that are being used within our city, and these are preventative measures and also programs that we have here in the city that allow to help the homelessness and the opiate use that we have. Like the person, the presenter before, we have to start somewhere. This opiate use that we have here in our city is because somebody, it's basically they're looking for a medicate, to medicate themselves for something. So there must be an ailment as to which this person needs this medication and therefore has medicated in the wrong way. We need to find out the underlying issues as to why the people look for these solutions. There has to be some barrier of hurt as to why these people have gone through these conditions, and therefore, it's not just homelessness or opiate use, it's just the entire package that needs to be looked at so that a solution could be taken forth. If we only look at one of these phases, there's so many other things that combine to make this the situation that it is, and if we don't conform to everything that it is, there will be no solution to the problem. So therefore, I will let Evelyn take over and let you guys know what is in the packet and any other information, further information that their organization can provide.
Thank you, Councilor Almonte. Thank you, President and councilors, for having us here. The data presented before you.
Sorry, just for the record, can you please identify yourself?
I'm Evelyn Rodriguez. I am the Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative Coordinator, so I represent the underage drinking and other substance use prevention in the Merrimack Valley. We represent five cities, which is Lawrence, Methuen, Andover, North Andover, and Havrell. This is Kate Laveria. She has been newly assigned as the MOPC coordinator, so she's working with the Merrimack Opiate Abuse Prevention Collaborative. So we have both programs represented in this folder. You will see data on current overdose deaths. Unfortunately, we only have, excuse me, we only have data for Lawrence up until 2014. We're currently working on updating this report, but we have some data from our neighboring cities. We just want to represent our program as a whole and let you guys know that as a preventative measure, we are working hard and diligently in all schools with collaborations, beginning from putting a PSA out in all local community access channels, along with Havrell Education Channel and the Methuen Education Channel, on educating parents to talk to their children as early as nine years old on the matter of alcohol use, peer pressure, and substance use going on in schools and throughout our communities. We have packets, brochures, and informational pamphlets in this packet that we hand out at schools and throughout our neighborhood businesses. We also have the statement of grant intent, which will explain to you what my grant does and the purpose of such grant throughout our cities. I have a picture showing what the beginning processes have commenced. Being in the city of Methuen, we started with a sticker shop campaign where we visited five local liquor stores and adhered stickers that said, hey, remember, it's illegal to provide alcohol to anyone under the age of 21. That was one of the efforts. We have a picture of the SAD members, which are Students Against Destructive Decisions. They were the ones that held this event, and we will extend this event through the other four cities, and we will have our youth involved. Our youth will be the ones primarily doing all these events and primarily sending the message across. With that being said, I'll hand it over to Kate for the rest of the MOPC.
So if you look on the left side of the folder, you'll see there is, it's called a logic model. So part of my grant for the Massachusetts Opiate Abuse Prevention, half of it is for the prevention of the first use of opiate pills, heroin, and the second part is prevention of more overdoses than there already have been in the Merrimack Valley. Some strategies we're trying to implement is educating parents on addiction, warning signs, and try to help them be more aware of what their children might be capable of. We're also trying to coordinate scope of pain training for prescribers, so recently it's been in the news a lot with our state rep and our governor Baker so that the pills are not over-prescribed, so there's supposed to be limitations on there. And we're also trying to coordinate ESPERT trainings for school nurses or councilors within high schools and middle schools, so we're trying to get students aware of prevention.
And for those of you that aren't aware of what ESPERT is, it's a screening brief intervention and referral to treatment. So what they do is they screen the ninth graders and seventh and eighth graders as to their risks towards taking drugs, using drugs, or their environment, risks around their environment. So that will let the counselor taking the ESPERT screening aware as to what treatments these kids should be referred to and how we can better help them instead of just keeping them under the rug and just ignoring the issue at hand.
We also have, if you see Time for Change, we're having an event coming up, and it is for parents and kids of any age to be able to come, and there's going to be a viewing of If Only. It was a movie put out recently by the Mark Wahlberg Youth Foundation for Prevention to try to see if parents can recognize signs, and we're going to be having key speakers there, too, and that's going to be March 5th at the Lawrence Senior Center.
And that documentary actually shows real-life parents living in Tewksbury, another neighboring city, that have lost children due to overdose deaths, and you'll see children as young as 16 years old having passed in this documentary. It's a very touching documentary, a very impactful documentary. We not only would like parents to watch it, but we would like parents to watch it along with their children so that when their children have the questions, it opens up the conversation for parents and makes it a little bit easier to discuss the matter at hand and how the severity of the matter at hand has become increasingly rapidly inflected in our city. This logic model is tentatively approved. We are waiting for BSAS, the Bureau of Substance and Beer Services and Department of Public Health, to finalize the approval. We're just waiting on final edits that need to be done. Once it's approved, these strategies will be implemented once again in all five cities. I'm still in the process of developing mine. We are, the process entails getting a proper consensus from key representatives from all five cities. So once that consensus comes to a good poll, then we can move forward with any intervening variables that the community deems ready and need, in need of such service, and then we'll go from there and provide some strategies moving forward. But we're working closely both with your Board of Health and the License, the Inspection Services Department here when it comes to compliance checks and underage drinking, stings, and all that is a part of our plan throughout the five cities, once again.
Ms. Laveria and Ms. Rodriguez, thank you very much for your presentation here this evening. Councilors, any additional questions?
Can I just finish off?
Councilor Almonte, she'll have the floor, and when she finishes, Councilor Rodriguez, Alvarez Rodriguez, and Councilor Rodriguez.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the girls for coming. I invited them. I understand that this article was on panhandling, but they're standing out there for a reason. They're homeless, they're using, maybe if they're not, there is a reason why they're out there. This is a greater, it shouldn't have just said panhandling because it's a greater, greater, greater need. I know that this, the ordinance is for panhandling in specific, but I think that this information is very viable because the reason for them being out there is underlined in these pamphlets, and I think that we can find a solution along with these grants that we have been so graciously able to receive, not only here in the city of Lawrence, but within the surrounding cities. We have five cities that were, that were made for this grant to be had, and we're fortunate enough to have caring people there that want to help and push this to go forward because had of these girls not fought that hard for that and have they have not gone through all the meetings that they went through to get these grants, they would have never, ever, ever been able to have them because it wasn't just a gift. They didn't say these grants are yours, figure that, figure what you're going to do with them. No, they actually had to look up the grants. Go fight for these grants. Make sure that everything was underlined, every dot was put there, that every T was crossed to let them know how, how much we need this help and how much we're willing to collaborate with other communities surrounding us to make sure that this, that this happened. It's not an easy task. It's something new, so therefore, the undertaking is a lot larger because it's easier to take something when it's already there and continue it along, but a new project like this takes a lot of effort, and I want to applaud the girls and the efforts that they have made in the other cities and towns that have wanted to collaborate with us and help us through and see this through. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Almonte.
Thank you very much. And with that being said, I wanted to add that we just, we were also just awarded the Drug-Free Communities Grant, so that is specifically Lawrence-based, sorry. Specifically Lawrence-based. Ms. Laila Rivera is the coordinator of that, and she will be also informing you guys of future endeavors along with that grant.
Wonderful. Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you. Council President, I think I asked to withdraw the document because I recognize, oh, this has nothing to do with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I don't think that everybody out there is on drugs, but. All right. So Council President, the reason why I asked that it be withdrawn not only is because the Chief of Police and the mayor has asked for it, but I also believe that there is some more serious thinking that we need to do about how to do this without violating anyone's constitutional rights. The ACLU has done wonderful work, you know, looking out for people's constitutional rights, but we also have a problem. We have an issue where people who are hanging out in particular stores, some people may avoid going there because they don't want to deal with it, you know, and I know, I know people who have said that to me. Oh, I'd rather just, you know, drive over to the Loop and whatever and take care of business there rather than. business there, rather than... And what we need to be looking at is, why is it that there are some cities who are not facing this problem, and why are we facing it, and how do we deal with it? Because it's very much related to when people call us and say, there are people sitting in front of my, you know, in front of my house, and they're drinking and smoking pot, and they're leaving their stuff there, the empty bottles and, you know, whatever they've been eating, they leave a mess there. And while we want the people and hold homeowners responsible for having a clean sidewalk, at the same time, we tell them, well, it's a public way, so you can't tell people that they can't sit there, you know, which is, like I'm saying, the same problem with this. There are people who are actually facing difficulties because of the loitering and the panhandling. And, you know, on the one hand, they don't have the right, we're being told, they don't have the right to say, hey, you cannot hang out here, you know? But at the same time, you know, they're the ones paying the taxes and, and keeping the area clean. We have to face that. Lawrence is our city, it's our great city, and we need to continue to find ways to deal with the aesthetics of it, you know, of it all. Because we say, this is how people look at our city. Every time they look at us, this is what they see. So we want to change that. And that has nothing to do, by the way, with, with what I believe in terms of homelessness. But for years and years and years and years, over 30 years, you know, in the human services, I know that these problems that we're talking about are monumental, and they're not going to be solved, you know, through one single grant or two single grants, you know, or two grants, by the way. And it's a, it's a, it's been a real problem. I mean, it's something, it's something that we, these problems, we've been facing for a long time. I believe that we should withdraw this document until we are able to find a way that we can deal with the issues of constitutionality and, and deal with being able to take on what the business people are asking us to do.
Definitely. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez. Counselor Rodriguez.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to ask you a couple of questions, the two of you, if you allow me, please. This is great what you guys have here, and I know that we need to be more proactive about these departments. We'd like to know, in terms of treatments, I, I hear that we have a lot of different clinics, methadone clinics here in Lawrence. Like, how many we have in total? Do you know?
Methadone clinics in Lawrence, I believe there's two, because the psychological, the psychological center closed, so now a lot of the resources of there are gone.
All right. It's a total of five, in total. I hear. Two of them are in my district, and a lot of, a lot of the people that are asking for money, they're, they're around there. But that's not the point. The thing is, do we know, like, why we have so many people going, coming to the city from outside, from other cities, to go, to go to those methadone clinics? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, like, I don't know if I'm right, I might be wrong, but I don't know if those services are strictly for Lawrence or they are from other communities surrounding us, and, and why is this? I mean, if you have any information about that.
Well, we're working closely with the Mayor's Health Task Force in trying to figure out where the influx in homelessness is arising from. Apparently, we have come to the conclusion, with information brought to us through key stakeholder interviews and focus group, interviews that we've held, that most people being arrested or released from prison are homeless, have no documentation to get their IDs, and don't have jobs, therefore, they're being dropped off in the city of Lawrence. And once they're dropped off here, due to lack of the ability to obtain an ID, to obtain these resources, now they have to wait for Mass Health to kick in, or there's no proper transitioning. There wasn't. I'll rephrase that. Now, after a brief meeting with the Sheriff Cousins and the Department of Correction, we found out that there is now going to be a better transitioning method for those that are imprisoned and being released. She will talk more about that.
So I went and visited Sheriff Cousins last week, and he is very much trying to take this and learn from all the mistakes that have been happening over the past years within the state. With that said, he had opened his own detox center with, on the grounds in Middleton, but unfortunately, it's only taking up to 42 people right now. The budget, I, I saw the budget firsthand, and it's, it's a lot of money to keep people in there for 28 days, to be able to feed them, clothe them, give them a bed, give them the therapy that they need, as well as other treatments. So I've, I've noticed within the city that there are different places that people who are suffering can go. Some are only dry, so they cannot be high of any sort or drunk or anything, which means that they could be turned away. So what we're trying to do is figure out, these places that are turning people away, where they are going next. So are they sending them to different areas? Are they sending them to, out of, out of the town? Are they giving them different ways of treatment, or are they just saying, sorry, like, you need to leave? So we're, we're slowly trying to figure out how it's all panning out, but the meeting with the sheriff's office was very helpful, because he does want to see more change in the state.
In terms of the methadone clinics, I actually have a friend that have a shop right in front of one of those clinics, and I go down there, and I have seen many people from other states coming to take advantage of those services. And they are now from Massachusetts, they are strictly from other, well, as far as I can judge, I can see the cards with license plate from New Hampshire, and many, maybe other states, but for New Hampshire, for sure. And so assuming that they are now from here, based on the license plate, there is many services that go, that is going away from, from the people from Massachusetts, and maybe from the people from Lawrence. If, there is, I don't know if there is something that we can do about that. I know that I have seen, I have seen a person, and, and that's, that's very concerning, because, I mean, the service that is supposed to go to the people from Massachusetts are going to another people. And also, I also hear, I also hear today that they hold, the methadone clinics hold meetings during the morning time, like, maybe like at 11:00, 11:30, or something like that. And when people are trying to go to work, they have to miss one day of work, and, and maybe employees or whatever, they don't believe that they're going to a meeting, and because of the history and so forth and so on. So that's kind of like a lack of either communication or proper coordination with the homeless or people that use in the service, and so forth and so on. And I don't know what we can do about it. I mean, I know that if you guys go to, two of the methadone clinics that are in my district, and one, both of them are out of Water Street, and you will see firsthand what I'm talking about, people from another state coming in and using the service, being aggressive, because I have seen it also. And, and it's, it's not, it's not good to see that, and going, our service from Massachusetts going to people that are now from here, if we judge them based on the license plate. I'm not saying that they are not from here, but they might not. I don't, I don't know.
To speak to that effect, having worked with EOHS for many years in the past, I know that anybody getting services in the state of Massachusetts has to be insured in the state of Massachusetts and have to prove residency in the state of Massachusetts. Now, if they're coming from another state with private insurance, even with that being said, after a certain amount of time being serviced, they need to make sure they prove residency here. So they could be coming from other state, but staying in a shelter. And as long as they're staying in that shelter, it's proving residency in the city or in the state of Massachusetts. A lot of people, unfortunately, are moving this way, because this is where the services are right now. And with that being said, with these efforts being brought about to this table today, we are trying our best to improve all-around wraparound programs, coming from prisons, coming out of prisons, schools to counselors, prisons to therapists, therapists to follow-up care, detox to follow-up care. We're trying to connect all the gaps in those bridges. We're trying to create bridges to bridge all those gaps that are currently in our system, so that we don't have any of these gaps anymore or any of these lapses anymore. This is a major part of the MOPEC effort to this day. As for the methadone clinic, that would be something that they would have to track. That's not a part of our process or our job, but educating them as to the importance and the relevance of managing methadone properly, and maybe offering other services after a certain amount of time, not keeping someone on methadone for 25 years, trying to learn, teach them how to start weaning these people off and not being dependent on that treatment. That's more of our piece. We're more the education and preventative piece, but it's great information, and it would be something that we can take back to the table, to our team, and maybe look into and further extend our efforts that way.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselors, seeing that there is no additional discussion, I'd like to ask the author of the motion, if you will consider making it without prejudice, in case we do have to come back to discuss it in the meeting.
I think that's an excellent idea, Mr. President, because, as I said, I think we need to do more thinking around this. It is a problem. So how do we deal with it? We shouldn't run away from it.
So the motion on the floor is to withdraw this document without prejudice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Counselor LaPam, Vice President?
Take two documents out of order. Take document 2916 and 3016, out of the appropriation order resolutions, out of order.
Second?
The motion is on the floor and properly second in the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 2916 is a resolution for Paul Degnault, and 3016 is a resolution for Eileen Degnault. Counselor Rodriguez.
How are you guys doing? Well, today we're here because the members of the City Council of the city of Lawrence would like to recognize and honor Paul and Eileen Daniel. And the reason that we are here recognizing them is because of the effort that they are putting and, and how they've been working so hard as a volunteer for our city of Lawrence. They, both of them, they were born here. They get an associate degree from NECO, Northern State Community College, back then, and she served in different locations, working for about 27 years. And Paul also was a military for, he served in the military from 1966 to 1969. They've been married for 47 years.
Woo!
And they have five beautiful childrens. And we, we would like to recognize them because that is, this is very important to the city of Lawrence, that people that were born here, that come to the city of Lawrence and like to serve our community are doing it. And we'd like to go up there and say, the city of Lawrence and the City Council of our community is recognizing Paul and Eileen Daniel because of your service, because of the military service that you serve, and because of the volunteer effort that you're putting into the, into the cemetery of our city, that have so much need. And I will tell you up there, looking at us, that go up there, serve, volunteer, because this is how we're going to make a difference. This is how we're going to make a change in our community, and, and doing the right thing is volunteering our time. I would like to, I met them because of the previous District D Counselor Coloflis, and I would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you very much. I'd just like to point out, I've been with the City Council for a number of years, eight years. I've been an advocate for the city of Lawrence for many years. Advocate for my district in Tower Hill that I served. Advocate for the city of Lawrence. Now, I've been on the cemetery board for a number of years, and I served there as vice chairman. It's a long time, however, the cemetery needs a lot of help. We have two laborers up there, one heavy motor equipment operator and one machine, foreman. I come across this couple, this wonderful couple. Come up closer, please. Come up to the wonderful couple, Paul and Eileen, Eileen Degnault, with my other director, Katie Darwin. We were touring, touring the cemetery. What do I come across? Two individuals here with power tools, cutting down shrubberies taller than this counselor here. And I tell you, what a job they did. I couldn't believe my eyes, and neither could Katie Darwin. I couldn't believe that they volunteered to take such an awesome job up, cutting down shrubbery, trees that are humongous trees. They did it, along with the bee bites and along with the heavy cold that they caught. But they volunteered because they went up to see our superintendent, Tom Ferris, and Tom accepted their volunteerism. What we need, like the library up there, volunteers to help our cemetery, because sometimes the budget doesn't allow. But we need more help up there. And I thank Counsel Rodriguez. We got a Tower Hill counselor that's going to represent part of District D, I mean, District D, and we've got our Council President, Counselor, yeah, Kendra Vasquez, sorry, Counsel President, but Counsel Vasquez, I got in touch with him and Rodriguez, and they accepted to do this. I explained, and I'm very proud to have these two counselors. We're going to have a good Tower Hill.
Thank you. And this is for you, and if you'd like to say... Thank you very much.
I'd just like to thank the councilors for the recognition. It's been our pleasure to serve up at the cemetery. There's a lot, lot of opportunity there, a lot of history, and we just love doing that type of work. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some pictures here, councilors, just briefly. Going to pass them out here. Go into David, Counselor, have them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coloflis.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Will we read the pictures?
Oh, yeah. Would you come around, Counselor?
Yeah.
Eileen, you want to take it away?
No, okay.
Thank you, Counselor Rodriguez.
Counselor President?
Counselor Reyes?
Can I take two items out of committee report out of order?
I'm sure. Which documents are you?
Four dash 15 and five dash 15.
There's a motion on the...
Sixteen, sorry, sixteen.
There's a motion on the floor to take document four 16 and five 16 out of order. Is that second?
Second.
It's been properly second in the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document four 16 is disclosure by municipal employee of financial interest. Madam Chair, from... Madam Chair, from ordinance?
Yes, that has been presented in ordinance committee and that has been put on the agenda by Robert Runger and is only a disclosure of final interest. And I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion has been made. Second? Second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I didn't even answer, but we went through that really, really quickly.
What did you want to add?
Disclosure by municipal employee of financial interest. I wanted to know what this was about, if I could get an overview from the chairperson.
Is Mr. Runger here?
We took a vote on the matter. This is something that the principal account clerk, Mr. Runger, currently works for the City of Florence as the principal account clerk. And he is disclosing to us that he does provide additional service. So he's just disclosing the additional service that he's getting paid for.
Okay. And that the additional services that he provides to the city, just because people at home want to know. So, Mr. Runger, if you could disclose what, I mean, what the financial interest is? Because that's how the way it was put here, disclosure of municipal employee of financial interest. So I'm not sure what that meant.
Help out the election department on elections, just on that day, actually that evening. I take care of the AccuVote machines, make sure that they're prepared for elections. And when the elections are completed, I get the information, download it and give the results.
Awesome.
That's my job.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
All of that is done outside of my regular working hours.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you for doing so.
Yeah, I just want to ask very quickly, how many years have you been doing this now?
I think this is my 10th year, ninth or 10th year.
Ninth year? Yeah. Yeah, because I've seen this come up. It comes up every year. Sort of you doing the right thing, which is to disclose to the public, you know. You're doing this work outside of your regular-
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
And I think it's important, you know, what councillor Armonte was saying. He's been coming so many times, but you're right. You don't know what you were voting for, but that's why we asked, you know, all the applicants to come back just in case anyone has any question. And I don't want them to hear from me. I just want them to hear from you, but thank you.
Moving on to the next document. Document five sixteen is a 2016 taxi livery renewal. Madam Chair, from the ordinance committee.
That is another document that has been coming in front of us like, you know, a couple of years. And all the paper was in order. Officer Flores is here just in case that anyone has any question. It's just renew all the license. So I'm looking for a motion if anyone does have any question.
Sorry, councillor. I have to withdraw one company.
Okay.
Which is high-class transportation?
Which one is that one?
High-class transportation?
Oh, high-class transportation.
That license was revoked.
Okay, so councillor, how are we, councillor president, how are we going to do that? So approve?
We will approve, accept high-class transportation.
Don't accept them in the-
So we will not accept that one.
Okay, so motion to approve document five dash sixteen, accept or exclude high-class transportation?
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Councillor LaPlante and councillor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, officer. One of the things that, through you, council president, one of the things that I hear about from my constituents, and I'm hopeful that you could help with this, which is sometimes these taxi cab companies stop in the middle of the road, stopping traffic and they're opening the doors up. And I think the house from District A in years past may have also commented on this as well. So it's something that bears repeating. It's something that I think that, from your position as the official who goes ahead and part of the regulatory process and promotes these things in the council, that you bring back the message. And when you see that, please reinforce the fact that it's a safety issue, it's a nuisance issue, it's a quality of life issue, if you can break that back to them. The horns, I haven't had as many complaints about the horns. Maybe people are frustrated and they think nothing's going to happen. Or there's improvements. I haven't figured that out yet. But if you can continue on with making sure that the horns are, they're not doorbells, okay?
Correct.
Make a phone call. Everybody's got cell phones. You, your rides here, call your fare. Tell them to come out on out, or have the fare wait. Do something else, but just don't be beeping the horn and pretend it's a doorbell because it's not. It's a horn. So if you would help with that, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, I will call a meeting with the taxi association and bring all those matters up.
Thank you. Thank you, council president.
Councillor-
Mr. President, we know that we have in the ordinance committee, we still have items to deal with all of the issues that some of the taxi and livery owners have brought up and hopefully enhancing the policies already set in place. But what we need also is action, like what actions we can take and who is to be held responsible, the driver itself or what? Because while the vice president LaPlante has not had, heard a lot in the past year concerning the horns I have in, exactly in District A. There's so much, and it's so loud at two and three in the morning. And there are people that are sick. There are people who are trying to get, you know, up early for, you know, and they need their sleep. And something needs to be done because no matter what you tell them, they'll get into an argument with you. You know, somebody tells them, "Don't do that," they'll get into an argument with people and be disrespectful. And, you know, what they don't know is that the public does have a say because they can come here anytime that we're ready to renew their license and let us know how they've been behaving. But just so that everybody on this, in this body knows if you have any issues, please bring them because we expect to have a very long and interesting conversation in the ordinance committee with the, there's an invitation to the chief as well for us to have that discussion with them. It happened once way back when there was no policy, there was no hackney unit. And we managed to do that and to make the taxi livery owners take a little bit more ownership and responsibility.
I agree with that.
Right? And I kind of see that that recently has been, you know, not really being followed as it was when we started with the energy and motivation. And I see a lot of violations lately and-
I do receive several calls and voicemails. And I do follow up on that. And those who are listening, you can reach me at 794-5900, extension 693. And you can leave your complaint there and I will follow that up.
And you've been excellent in doing that work, you know, just as the person before you when they concentrated only on that work, did an excellent job. And you've been doing an excellent job too. And I know that some of the drivers, I mean, I like you, but you have to, you know, follow the rules and do, and not follow them, actually enforce them.
Force them.
Enforce them. So sometimes when they come to me and they say, "Oh, you know, I don't like this officer," I say, "Well, what happened?" "Well, you know, he stopped me." And I say, "Well, what were you doing?" "Well, you know..." So I know-
No one's happy when they receive a citation.
Right. So I just want to thank you for the work you do and hopefully we'll have a great discussion at the ordinance. I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
At the ordinance committee. Thank you, council president.
Councillor Armonte?
Thank you, council president. And thank you, Officer Flores, for being here this evening. What I'm going to talk about just briefly has to do with transportation. But there's a difference between taxi livery and private school transportation. We're having a lot of complaints on that.
On which one?
We have a myriad of them. They're popping out of everywhere. I'm not even sure how or if even some of these are like legal. You have some daycare. We have progressive growth of daycare centers and private daycare facilities that people are opening up. Some of these places, they'll buy their own vans to make it easier for transportation for the kids to come to and from these daycare centers. So it's really not all the, all on the taxi drivers. I want, because I've been after the taxi cab drivers for a while. That was like my, my thing back then. But I've noticed a progression of that. North Redding Transportation, I'm on call with usually if some certain situations are happening, usually, you know, I'm able to talk to them and that has alleviated itself. Where I'm having a problem connecting is with the private school charters or transportations that we're having where a lot of these don't have numbers that you could say amigos or chicos or whatever, and you don't know who it is or where it's from or what it's in relation to. So I'm not sure if we know of, if they're carrying children, if we have a list of the daycare centers that are using vehicles, is it legal? Because I know of a few that are not.
I believe you are referring to the ones with the pupil plates?
Um, there are some, there are some that have just regular Massachusetts plates on them and they're vans and I can tell that they're not what they're supposed to be.
Those aren't regulated by us. They're regulated by the state. On the other ones, you're speaking of the private vehicles. I've come across a couple last year and I took them off the road. And they-
The big white vans?
There was a white van, yeah, and a smaller minivan. But I took those off the road and they went and did the proper paperwork and got registered the way they should run their company.
Thank you for that because those are the ones in my district on the bottom of the one-way. We know which ones we're talking about. But I wanted to reiterate that, that yes, we're having problems with the taxi cab drivers. It's been a little less, but those are the ones that are like coming around and honking the horns more because they don't go through the rules and regulations that the taxi cab drivers get told by, you know, the corporate owner or whatever, you know, "These are the rules you have to follow so we don't get in trouble." Some of these people are just, you know, okay, I open up a daycare center and I buy a van and to make it easier for pickup and delivery of these kids, I just have it under my name and I charter these kids back and forth. You know, I've noticed a growth of that, so I'm not sure how we can handle that or how we can even investigate into it unless they're breaking the law. I don't think that we'll be able to point a finger at them because that's not what we're looking for. Our energies need to be at other places at the moment. But I think that that's something that we should look at because we're progressively getting so many daycares opening up in our city. And that's something else that I wanted to put on the, because I don't even know if we should start looking into caps and stuff like that on that because I don't know how legal that is. But anyway, that's different, that's a whole different baby. But with this one, I'm talking about that, you know, with the progressiveness of all of this stuff, it's just becoming difficult to identify if it's a taxi or if it's a private school charter or whatever it is.
Thank you, councillor Armonte. Any additional discussion? Seeing that there's none, all those in favor of the approval, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposition? The ayes have it.
Point of parliamentary, that was with that one reduction, that one was out.
That is correct. Okay, moving on to the top of the agenda once again. Document, public hearings. Document 26815 is a handicap parking, 87 Railroad Street for Marion Santiago. Was placed on the agenda by myself. Mr. Clerk?
Document 2682015, notice is hereby given. The City Council will hold a public hearing Tuesday, January 19, 2016 in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the City of Florence by adding the following new paragraph to the handicap parking section to be inserted in proper order concerning Railroad Street, north side from a point 250 feet easterly of the intersection of May Street and Railroad Street to a point 270 feet easterly of the intersection of May Street and Railroad Street. To the extent there exists any other ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed. In that respect, only persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on January 8.
Does anyone in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Seeing there's none, councillors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve the item, handicap parking for 87 Railroad Street and to do away with the 30 days, please.
Second?
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document 27115, handicap parking at 26 Texas Avenue. It was placed on the agenda by Carmen Mota. Mr. Clerk?
Document 2712015, notice is hereby given. The City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 19, 2016 in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information and public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the City of Florence to be amended by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking section to be inserted concerning Texas Ave, north side from a point 230 feet westerly of the intersection of Marble Ave and Texas Ave to a point 250 feet westerly of the intersection of Marble Ave and Texas Ave. To the extent there exists ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed. In that respect, only persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published January 8.
Does anyone in the audience wishes to be heard? Seeing that there's none, councillors, what's your motion on this item?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept the handicap parking on 26 Texas Ave.
Motion has been made. Properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. The next document is document 27715, handicap parking at 26 Barrisford Street. It was placed on the agenda by Catherine and Paul Gordon. Mr. Clerk?
2772015, notice is hereby given. The City Council will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January 19, 2016 in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information and public input concerning the proposed amendment to the handicap parking section by adding the following. Barrisford Street, north side from a point 85 feet westerly of the intersection of Beaconsfield Street to a point 105 feet westerly of the intersection of Beaconsfield Street. To the extent there exists ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed. In that respect, only persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published January 8.
Does anyone in the audience wishes to be heard? Chief of Staff, Eileen Burnell?
Hi, my name is Eileen Burnell. I reside at 257 Mount Vernon Street. And I just happen to be in the audience. I don't begrudge anyone a handicap parking spot. And so I just was curious because that's a small residential street with single-family homes that all have driveways. So I just, if you could just share with us whatever grounds Officer Scanlon gave. Just very unusual. There's not handicapped parking spots. Really not on-street parking even in that neighborhood. So I just thought it was unusual. But obviously there's something else that we don't know about, so I'm just hoping you could enlighten us. Thank you.
Is it here? I don't have it.
Does anyone else wishes to be heard? Okay, councillor?
Yes. Yeah, but his recommendation was to approve this handicap spot. Yeah, that's basically what he, what he recommended us to do.
Okay. Councillor Reyes, are you all set?
Yeah, well, the reason why he was saying that is the petition has limited mobility. And he kind of went and revisited the area, but that was basically his recommendation.
Motion to approve the item?
We have a motion. Anyone else in the audience wishes to be heard? Okay, public hearing is now closed. A motion to approve has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And I'd like to-
To waive the 30 days?
We have a discussion. Councillor Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. This is my district that I represent. I'm not familiar with this application. I heard from the association or anyone else to this matter. So I would ask whomever was the chair, as a new member of the chair of the ordinance committee, did anyone come and speak on this? Was this, was there, I'd like some background on this. I saw it on the agenda. I was hoping to meet the applicant. But as the chief of staff mentioned earlier, this is a very wide residential street. Not too much on-street parking, everyone with driveways. So I'm just curious as to, hey, my colleagues or anyone here that can shed light?
Yes, through you, councillor president.
Councillor Reyes?
When, when the applicants came in front of us, what they were saying is they do have a driveway, but it was kind of difficult for them to go in the driveway and they have some kind of step that they have to use. If they have the space available from, it was more easy for them just to bring, to go inside. That was the explanation that they gave. So what we did at that point was we tabled the matter and we- So, um, what we did at that point was we tabled the matter and we sent Officers Callow to revisit the area just to make sure there was going to be something that was not going to affect anyone of the neighborhood. But, um, since you are the councillor of that district, if you want us, we can table, we can ask him to go one more time, or we can give you, um, some time if it's something that we can do, and you can go in and visit the area and just to kind of get more information about it.
Yes, council president?
I, I would, councillor.
I'll, I'll give you the floor.
I don't want to hold up anyone's handicap parking.
Right.
For me, it's important that, that, you know, not hearing from anyone, um, that they actually did come to the subcommittee meeting and represented themselves, and it just preceded my time here, um, which is fine. I just want to make sure that someone, no faceless entity applied to this and that someone actually came down and told you why there should be handicap parking, so I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, thank you. That is a good way to handle, you know, if it were to be something on my district that I know of my area, I would like to be concerned in why you are looking for something if you have space, but when they came in front of us, that was the explanation they gave us.
Yes, council president.
Councillor Alvarez, repeat it.
And even us as, um, councillor at large, we try to touch base with people from the district, or at least let you know that someone has approached us regarding this and that. Um, but, but I want to mention, which I think is really important, is that, um, Officer Eugene Scanlon is very strict and very detailed, and there have been times where he does not recommend, because they have a driveway and they will be able to easily use that as opposed to have, bring a handicap parking in the front. So, I mean, I, I know that he's very detailed about it, so that's why I feel comfortable moving ahead, but I most certainly will make sure in the future, as a member of the ordinance committee, if we see something that we let you know.
Councillor, councillor Abdu?
Please, thank you, uh, and thank you councillor Alvarez Rodriguez. And, um, I would note that it was, my colleagues just passed to me a September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen correspondence from the applicants, um, that I know is already in the record, but I would just point out for those here and, um, those at home. So, I, I have no further concerns or questions.
Wonderful. Um, councilors, seeing there's no further discussion, um, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. The next document is document two ninety-seven fifteen, a handicap parking at forty-two Byron Ave, it was placed on the agenda by Ernest Urassa. Mr. Clerk?
Document two ninety-seven, two thousand fifteen, notice is hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing Tuesday, January nineteenth in council chambers at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence to be amended by adding a new paragraph to the municipal code concerning handicap parking to be inserted in proper alphabetical order on Byron Ave, South Side, from a point one hundred twenty-five feet easterly of the intersection of Canterbury Street to a point one hundred forty-five easterly of the intersection of Canterbury Street. To that extent, uh, if there are any other ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect, only persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published January eighth.
Does anyone in the audience wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
That proof has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Communications from the mayor, city officials, or city attorney, there's none. Appropriations order and resolution, document seven sixteen, appropriation transfer from free cash on the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Chairman, vice president for the Budget and Finance Subcommittee?
Hey, council president, so I'm going to make a committee report first, and then I'm going to make a motion to order a public hearing, second. The Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to send up this document, which an appropriation transfer from free cash for three hundred thousand dollars to fire suppression over time, and make that a committee report in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made to accept as a committee report.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, councillor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes, um, through you, council president, I'm just asking the, in your, in councillor Plan's capacity as, um, Chair of the Budget and Finance, um, what happened that they were, that they ran short? I mean, was that what it happened?
So what we can do, I'm going to be making a, a motion to order a public hearing, and then I think at that point, when we have the public hearing, I think we'll have the fire chief available to, to discuss that. Um, in your document is a series of information that describes, describes how we got to this point that I think will be helpful for you.
Councilors, any additional?
In the documents we received tonight?
It's in the packet, councillor. Um, it starts off from a memo from Bill Maloney from Bryan F. Moriarty, Fire Chief, dated December thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Councilors, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, uh, all those in favor to approve as a committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Council president, I'd like to make a motion that we order a public hearing for this document, seven dash sixteen.
Second.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing and properly second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Document eight sixteen is an appropriation transfer from free cash on the amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars.
Same, same thing, council president, I'd like to make a motion to accept this as a, a committee report, and this is of course a transfer of fifty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars, uh, from free cash to the equipment replacement for the fire department, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to accept as a committee report, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, say aye to approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Council president, I'd like to make a motion that we order for a public hearing, document number eight dash sixteen, the appropriation transfer, as we just said, from free cash, uh, fifty-four eight seven three, to the equipment replacement in the fire department, make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document twenty-eight sixteen is an appropriation transfer from free cash reserves to city attorney litigation, legal fees on the amount of four hundred seventy thousand dollars. It was placed on the agenda by Mr. Mark Ianello, Finance Director, is going down to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Now moving on to committee reports, document six sixteen, Madam Chair from the ordinance Subcommittee.
Council president, three thirty dash fifteen is, is first.
Yep, document three thirty dash fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Um, document three thirty dash fifteen is a second-hand dealer license that is going to be at eighty-one South Broadway, that has been put on the agenda and went through that, um, ordinance Subcommittee, come out with a favorable recommendation. This is a second business, this is not the first one, I mean, it's, it's kind of a second one, but this is no, no, it's kind of a renewed one. All the paper was in order, and, um, she called me today that she would not be able to make it tonight, because she was sick, and, um, but if you, anyone has any question?
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve has been made.
Second.
And properly second, all those in, any discussion? All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. The next document is document six sixteen, Madam Chair from ordinance.
Okay. Uh, document six dash sixteen is a transparent license and that is, uh, has been put in by Rafael Gonzalez. This is a renew, this is not a new license, and he's been coming like for seven years. All the paper was in order, when he went to, um, ordinance committee, we went through all the rules and regulation, he was agreed to, and I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document fourteen sixteen, Madam Chair from personnel.
Thank you, council president. Uh, thank you, council president. Document fourteen, uh, twenty sixteen is the candidate appointment to the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, and the name is, uh, of Miss, Miss Michelle Malan- Melanson, excuse me. And this is for a, it's not saying how many years. Five years. If you bear with me one moment, please. Yes, she is, I believe. Ms. Melanson, are you here? Yes, if you can please come to the podium, thank you. Um, actually, she was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I make that in form of a motion.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly second.
And it is for five years.
Any discussion? Seeing there's-
Um, just, just one question.
Okay, discussion councillor Reyes?
Yeah, um, okay. Madam Chair, uh, this is going to be replace anyone, or this is an open seat?
That is, um, that's something that I'm going to discuss at the moment, I just wanted Ms. Melanson to come to the podium. I have, um, Mr. O'Donoghue here. Um, I just, first I wanted to, um, accept, accept the, um, the report, the motion, and then we can go into discussion.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Just for clarification.
This order, a point of order.
Thank you.
Um, councillor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes, um, the motion says that it's, it's a favorable recommendation-
To approve.
To approve. So, if, it wouldn't be a-
A committee report.
Just a report. It's not just a committee report.
And I second the, the motion.
Right. So the discussion would be now?
Yeah, the discussion, it was now.
Correct, so open for discussion at the moment. I'd like Mr. O'Donoghue to come to the podium, if you could please, thanks, Ms. Melanson. Um, during our meeting, um, Mr. O'Donoghue had had, um, a misconstrued, I believe, date or something, but he had some pertinent information, um, regarding the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, um, appointment, being that the seat that is being rendered would be the chair that Mr. O'Donoghue had, um, occupied at the, at, at the time. So at this moment, I will yield the floor to him so that he can explain the situation as to why he's here, what we need to know regarding the, the information he has, thank you.
Well, first of all, um-
Your name and address for the record, please, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, two eighty-eight Andover Street, Lawrence.
Thank you.
Um, I have copies of the, um, minutes from January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, and at that time, my appointment had said, uh, this was, uh, referred to the Personnel Committee. Then on February the fourth, the council unanimously approved me for, uh, to be on the Redevelopment Authority, and this is the record speaking, saying that it was for five years. And now all of a sudden, it's not for five years, and nothing has, uh, been, has been no, I can give you this if you want to.
Okay, please, thank you.
There's been no kind of notification to me of any kind, uh, that anything was going to change, and for me to be removed, uh, you have to understand that there was a motion made, and I was appointed for five years, so this is similar to a contract in a way. And for me to be removed, someone has to follow proper procedures, and I don't see that being done at this time.
Um, I would like to, at the moment, if I may, um, read into the record the document that was just handed to me. It is on page forty-five, document twenty-three fourteen, which is the appointment of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority for a five-year term of Mr. James Patrick O'Donoghue, his address present. It says at the request of council, council president Maldonado, councillor Almonte, present, presented the report of Personnel Committee to approve the appointment of James Patrick O'Donoghue as a member of the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority for a five-year term. The report was presented in form of a motion to approve the recommended appointment, which was seconded by councillor Toomey. And this was as of Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand fourteen. Next, I will be reading into record, the twenty-fifth page of Tuesday, January twenty-first, which says the, um, where it was document twenty-two fourteen, which, which was the, um, the recommendation to the committee for the appointment. Um, therefore being said, um, I just have a quick question for Mr. O'Donoghue. Mr. O'Donoghue, um, did you reapply, when you found out that this, um, seat was being presented to someone else or appointed to someone else, did you feel that you, how did you, how did you come up, did you reapply for that position? Were you not?
First of all, I wasn't notified that it had expired, because it was for five years, I anticipated that it would be for five, excuse me, five years, as it's supposed to be. So therefore, to suddenly change that is, uh, it's beyond me how this happened, how the mayor's office and his staff has handled this, and never, uh, came to me and, uh, asked me for any, um, you know, other information, and why they're changing what was legally done on that other date, to suddenly shortchange my, um, five years down to whatever it is that they're, uh, coming up with now. And if you read the law, there's a procedure they're supposed to, uh, go through to remove me, if that's what they're trying to do, and they have to bring charges against me, and, you know, uh, they're trying now to appoint someone that is less qualified than I am, in my opinion, and I think that's another issue.
Okay, Mr. O'Donoghue, have you given up your seat at the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority? Have you resigned to that chair?
Have I?
Have you given a, a personal, have you written a letter saying I resign to this chair for this chair to be up for appointment?
Never, never, never resigned.
I, I will, um, yield to the floor of any other, uh, members of the council.
Councillor Alvarez Rodriguez and then councillor Reyes?
Um, councillor, uh, through you, council president, I have a question for Mr. O'Donoghue. Mr. O'Donoghue, when did you become aware, since you, in your mind, it was for five years, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you didn't expect that anybody would be appointed to, you know, to replace you? So when did you find out that this appointment would be to replace you?
This appointment would, excuse me, say that again, the appointment would what?
When did you find out that the appointment being made would be to replace your participation?
I was called by, uh, the Chair of the Redevelopment Authority, and she left me a message on my answer machine, which I did save, and she said, I'm sorry that you won't be serving on the Redevelopment Authority anymore. And she said I could call her, but I never did call her. And the reason I didn't is because it raises a flag, and I like to put all my communications in writing. The mayor's office and the L.R.A. know my email address. Most of the L.R.A. communications outside of the public meetings are by email, so.
So what explanation were you given? I mean, it said you believed, and the council believed you were being appointed for five years.
That's what the public record shows, that I was appointed for five years.
So what explanation were you given by the administration for those who are maybe supporting the, the boards? What explanation were you given?
I was given no information.
So no one explained?
No, no explanation whatsoever. I mean, I can, I can maybe guess at what, what this is about, but I, I don't think that that, um, helps at all.
Okay, so you don't know. So you don't know?
No, I, I think we need, there's a communication problem, and that we need to get that straightened out, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm still on the Redevelopment Authority, and I, and I urge you to, um, to accept the fact that the legal, um, official documents show that I have that position for five years. I've served about two now.
Okay, so at no time you were told, well, you, you are, you replaced someone who left in the middle of their term, and you were then appointed to complete that term?
That's not, that's not what the official documents show, there's no record of that.
Right.
We have to go according to what it shows and not what people may say without any documentation.
So you would never, um, receive notice from the mayor's office, just?
No.
Um, a phone call from the chair?
No. Just that's, that's it, just the, the chair telling me of the Redevelopment Authority. Just that's, that's it, just the chair telling me, of the Redevelopment Authority.
And were you asked to reapply, or?
No.
So, did you, on your own, reapply?
Why would I reapply, actually? They, they have, as far as the curriculum vitae, they had an updated one for me at the mayor's office when I applied for another position, so, and that was recent. But there was no other documentation that I was asked to complete.
Okay, I'm just asking because there, you know, this, people have been talking about this, you know, and one of the things that I was told by someone was that you did, in fact, take to the mayor's office or delivered by hand your, your reapplication.
Say that again, please.
That you delivered by hand a reapplication, letting it known, letting it be known that you were still interested in serving.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I am serving in that position. Maybe I can just read my official statement on this, and, and I'm gonna be blunt about it, okay? According to the official city council agendas and minutes, I was appointed to the Lawrence Redevelopment Authority, also known as the LRA, for a term of five years. The LRA is moving forward with an urban renewal study. We can anticipate that at some point, the LRA board positions will become paid positions similar to the BRA positions in Boston, through development agreements at no cost to the taxpayers. The person that the mayor wants to appoint to the LRA in my stead is considerably less qualified to serve in that position than I am. I consider Mayor Rivera's action to be a wrongful discharge from the LRA. What the city council needs to know is that I consider the mayor's actions to remove me from the LRA to be retaliation for speaking out on Facebook against his publishing the names of recall signers. I also consider Mayor Rivera's actions to remove me as intimidating a witness because of what I overheard on November 18th, 2015, regarding supporters of the mayor conspiring to sign the recall petition in another's name, so that the recall petitions, petitioners could be a use of forgerys. I say shame on the mayor for all of this, thank you.
Well, I'm not aware of what's going on with the recall or not, so...
I, I have no idea.
At this time, I, I just...
But I'm just telling you that because I voiced, and suddenly he threw a hissy fit, and decided to pick somebody else, put someone else on the LRA in my position, and that's as far as I'm concerned, what, what happened.
I, I, I believe that we should respect people that come forward to volunteer and to give their all for, for our city, and because of that, I, I don't feel comfortable voting on this without having the right clarity. So, I'll just yield the floor, Mr. President, see if anybody else has any input.
Thank you, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez. We have Councilor Reyes, Councilor Maldonado, and Councilor LaPlante, Councilor Reyes.
Okay, thank you. I think the question, and I, and I heard you reading, was that when you first being offering to serve in that committee, did they tell you that you were gonna be replacing anyone, or was gonna be five years' term? Because that was the confusion that we have in the past, like someone was being, replacing someone, and just need to finish the term, but no to be the holding title, five years?
The position was to replace your seat, to take your seat on the LRA, but I was told that it was for five years at that time.
Okay, then, I think, you know, we just...
And that's what the...
And the motion was made for five years, and it was voted for five years.
When I was serving was only for two years, I think, three, two, three, three years for me, but...
The motion was made?
It's five years.
Five-year term.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, because I know that I was, when I was serving was only for three years, and sometimes they tell you, you're gonna be replacing someone who left and is an open seat, but it's only gonna be, the, the position itself is five years, but the current term is gonna be two years left, so I don't know if that was the conversation they...
Well, whatever the conversation was, I don't recall that. I recall the five years that I was appointed for, and that's what the official record says, so that's what I'm going according to.
And if, if I may, Council President, I did have a discussion with the chair of the LRA.
Councilor Maldonado first, and then...
Okay, I just wanted the input that she had given me excellent view of Mr. O'Donohue's work.
Councilor Maldonado.
Mr. Mulley, what is the procedure for removing somebody from a board?
I'm sure.
Huh?
I don't know.
I think, I believe, and that's something that we need to check, removing somebody from a board that has been approved by the city council requires city council approval. And obviously, since proper procedure has not been followed in removing this gentleman, or giving him an explanation, a proper explanation as to why he has been removed, which he believes is retaliation, I feel that with all due respect to, to Michelle, obviously you have nothing to do with this, but with all due respect to Michelle, it seems to me that we should get a legal opinion as to what is required to remove somebody that has been approved into a board. And since it has been approved by the city council, I believe that really requires city council approval to remove. So, any position that is approved by the city council requires city council approval to be removed. And Mr. O'Donohue has been treated unfairly, and I believe that the appointment of Michelle should be table pending a legal, legal opinion on what is required to remove a board member.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you made that in the motion?
I need to withdraw mine first.
Yeah, she needs to, you wanna withdraw your motion?
I would withdraw my, I'd, I'd yield the floor to Councilor LaPlante, so we can listen, but I would take back that motion, so that we can table at the end.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I still, I still have the floor.
Yeah, Councilor Maldonado has the floor.
What I would like to do is make a motion to table this document pending.
Second.
Pending, uh...
More discussion then.
Pending legal, legal opinion.
A motion to table, has been made, and properly second. All those in favor to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
On the motion to table, Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Councilor DePena.
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilor Abdu.
Yes.
Councilor Almonte.
No, 'cause I wanted to hear what LaPlante had to say.
Councilor Maldonado.
Yes.
Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Vice President LaPlante.
No.
And Council President.
Similar to Councilor Almonte, no.
One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, three opposed, motions carries.
Okay, thank you, councilors. Next document on the agenda is Document 1516, appointment for second city attorney, Brian Corrigan. Madam Chair, from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Document 1516 is the appointment of a second city attorney, Mr. Brian Corrigan, and Mr. Corrigan is here, that was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I will make that in form of a motion before seconding. Any questions that you may have for Mr. Corrigan? The appointee is here, so I will open it up with the, through you, Mr. Chair. I will open it up for the council members if they have any questions for Mr. Corrigan.
Madam Chair, will you mind making a motion to approve or submit as a committee report?
I will submit as a committee report, so that we can have discussion on the item.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
This is to accept as a committee report.
To accept as a committee report.
Committee report.
Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, although, discussion? Okay, discussion, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez?
No, not yet, but I've found this, um...
So, we're accepting as a committee report at this moment?
As a committee report, so when we vote now, we're just voting as a committee report.
Yeah, not for the approval of the appointment.
As a committee report.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Here we have the appointment of, like I said, the second city attorney of Mr. Brian Corrigan. We interviewed him, and, well, during the Personnel Committee meeting, and I wanted to open it up for any of the other councilors, if they have any questions for Mr. Corrigan at this time.
Madam Chair, will you mind making a motion to approve for the purposes of discussion?
Motion to approve for purposes of discussion.
Motion has been made, and properly second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question from Madam Chair first, and then for Mr. Corrigan. Madam Chair, when did you receive the, the application, the resume, or Mr. Corrigan?
We had the official application paperwork in our file. The night that we came in was when other documentation was handed to us, like the rest, rest of the documentation, it was a pamphlet that was given to us regarding other information, pertinent information that was in there. I wanted to make this one small clarification to the new applica, well, I'm not sure if the new applications are what, but I remember the applications, right next to where it says, if you may, pull up an application, any application, Mr. Corrigan or Ms. Melanson, for any appointments, usually next to where it says what your address is, there used to be a little line in there that said, "How long you've been living there"? I don't know how it happened. The revised date for this document is September of '02, and all of a sudden, the date of how long you have been living at this place is no longer a part of the application. So, I don't know if that was an oversight, if that was done purposely, or for what reason it was done, but I believe that it was there before. I have previous applications that say, you know, I've lived here, you know, after the address, it says for how long, and obviously, I'm not sure if it's conveniently or inconveniently, or for whatever reason, it no longer appears on the applications. So, I would like for that to be noted, and if it could be, please, be reinserted, because we need to know how long someone has been living somewhere, obviously, to be able to appoint these people to, to wherever chair they're going to, because you need to be living in the city of Lawrence for a certain amount of time, before you're able to occupy committees or chairs or employment for our city. So, certain employ, and certain employments. So, yeah, as of this time... Are you, are you guys ahead?
Thank you. Quick point of clarification, the documentation I, was placed on our packet on December 30th, 2015.
Okay, because when we sat down for the meeting, there was a packet that was handed to us, which had the, the rest of the, some of the information that was missing from our packet.
That is, it had, it had the same packet of information, was a duplicate of what we had in there.
Okay.
The floor, Councilor Maldonado.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Corrigan. Mr. Corrigan, you already have a signed contract, am I correct?
I do.
Okay. When did you start working?
Excuse me?
When did you start it working?
My first day here was December 28th.
December what?
December 28th of 2015.
Mr. Corrigan, I review your resume, and I would like to ask you some questions regarding your resume. In your resume, you indicated that you owned a firm. Can you tell me what, what concentration area the firm is involved in?
Absolutely, Counselor. I have owned my own law practice since 2000. I've been practicing law since 1998. I run a general practice law firm, and by that I mean, my experience is, is quite broad. I, I handle transactional work, which would involve real estate transactions, residential, commercial, business transactions, so purchase and sale of businesses, contracts, employment issues pertaining to, to businesses. And I also handle a fair amount of litigation work in those general practice areas. So, I do, I handle civil litigation in the land court related to real estate matters, in the various other courts, Superior District, Probate and Family Courts, pertaining to other areas of dispute. So, in the course of my, my practice, my 18 years of practicing law, I have developed an expertise in dealing with a variety of areas, including municipal law. And as I explained to the Personnel Subcommittee when I was here last week, my experience in municipal law is primarily from the other side of the table. So, I represent citizens, businesses, real estate developers, what have you, in their dealings with municipalities all throughout the Commonwealth. From zoning matters to border health issues, dealing with, with, with tax matters, with, with various city attorney offices. So, I'm quite familiar with, with all the issues that an assistant city attorney would be asked to deal with, and I, I think it's a tremendous value to have that experience from the other side of, of the proverbial table. So, so to sum up my answer to your question, I, I have 18 years of considerable experience to bring to this position here. And this position, in my opinion, requires somebody with a tremendous, tremendously wide background. The city of Lawrence, the legal issues that the city of Lawrence dealing with now and, and deals with traditionally are very diverse, multifaceted, from, from tax issues, tax lien issues, land court matters, to, you know, cases involving personal injury, property damage, et cetera, that have maybe brought in, in the district court or Superior Court, employment matters, which, as we all know, are obviously a very hot, hot topic these days, to, to labor relations. So, the position requires somebody who has a wide range of experience. So, I, I feel that, you know, I am really the perfect candidate for, for, for this particular
Did you apply for the position when it was posted?
I applied for this position in October of 2015. I don't know when this position was first posted, to be perfectly honest with you. I submitted my application, I think, on October 9th. It looks like it was received in the Personnel Office, according to my application, on October 13th.
I was of the impression that when the job was posted, none of the applicants qualified for the position, and that you were contacted after. Is that the case, or is not?
I don't remember the exact circumstances. I know that I had some communications with Attorney Bernal shortly after she became Chief of Staff. We discussed the open position, and she encouraged me to, to fill out an application. I hadn't really... I hadn't really considered it up to that point, but when I was asked to do so and that the city would consider it, I was obviously very excited about the opportunity, so I jumped on it.
Okay, thank you. Is Attorney Bodie around? Can you mind come forward, please? Mr. Bodie, Attorney Cocuzzo, this is the position that Attorney Cocuzzo had, am I correct?
Yes.
My understanding in that position was that Attorney Cocuzzo was handling union negotiations in some cases?
Some of them, yes, he was. But if I could further respond, when we received a new overseer, he wanted us to farm out the union contract negotiations.
Okay.
And so we've done that.
Okay. Attorney Cocuzzo also dealt with employees' complaints and lawsuits?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again, please?
My understanding is that Attorney Cocuzzo was also dealing with employees' lawsuits against the city.
Some of them, yes. Others were handled by Attorney Ruano and some by me.
What other areas was Attorney Cocuzzo dealing with in terms of litigation, court litigation?
He handled civil service hearings and appeals, arbitration of grievances, and he handled appearances before the Department of Labor Relations for unfair labor practice charges, primarily. He did have one or two litigation cases as well that I had assigned to him.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Corrigan, I have very carefully reviewed your resume, and obviously, your concentration of experience is in real estate. You even indicated that you conducted over 3,000 residential, commercial, real estate closings. And in my opinion, none of that experience have anything to do with the position that is open. Obviously, because of that, I believe that we need somebody with more experience in those areas that were mentioned by the city attorney. And based on your resume and the descriptions that you provided us, does not include any of that. And because of that, I am not going to vote in favor of appointing you in that position. So I needed you to know that.
Okay, fair enough.
Counselors, any further discussion? Counselor Laplante?
I just want to make sure I'm clear. Mr. Clerk, we received this application form. When did we get this packet of information?
The document, the cover letter is clocked in on December 30th at 1:14 PM, received by one of the staff and filed, along with the resume.
Were there any changes between when you received that until when we got this in our packet for this evening's meeting?
Not from my office.
Okay. And you're the only one that handles this and sends the stuff out, the City Council?
Actually, there's probably three or four of us.
But they're in the clerk's office?
About three or four of us.
In the clerk's office, not another counselor, no one from Personnel, not the administration, it's the clerk's office?
Not that I'm aware of.
What I'm trying to get at is, who sends to us the agendas and then the background information?
Sometimes I do, sometimes one of the staff members do.
In your office? That's what I'm getting at, okay. So, and it's unlikely that a staff member would change that? Would you be aware of that if something were to be changed on here?
I frankly would not know. I mean, in terms of a chain of custody and strictly as to a chain of custody, it would escape me if someone did, but if someone snuck in a document, it could happen, but...
What's the likelihood of that happening?
The only way I could tell is by looking at any document that'd be varied from what I have on file. That'd be the only way I could tell.
It seems to me as though it's probably unlikely that someone's gone into your files, sent some information out, changed the information, and then sent it to the City Council. Maybe it's happening. If that's happening, we've got a problem in this...
I would like to look at the document that's suggesting there's a change, and I could compare it to what I have on file.
Okay. There was an accusation, or at least an allegation this evening, that there was potentially a change. I just want to make sure if there was, that that shouldn't be happening. And I just want to make sure that's not happening, if something's sent in, unless something is added to that document at the Personnel Committee level, which could happen, of course, because we encourage that, I would imagine.
It does.
And that's not a problem. But to take things out from that packet...
Anything we get from the Subcommittee, we clock in and stamp.
There's a second point. There must be, I mean, I'm going to ask the Chief of Staff if you don't mind, Counselor Bernal, could you come up, please, for a second? So it's my understanding that the administration put out a list of job postings, received applications. Can you talk to me about what kind of applicants you received?
The applications go through Personnel to Mr. Frank Bonet, so they don't come directly back to the mayor's office, so I have not seen all the applications that came through. I did know there was some level of dissatisfaction with the applicants. I do want to say, on December 30th, I'm the person that walked Mr. Corrigan's application, his resume, and his signed contract down to the city, and it was actually an unsigned copy of the contract. I walked those three documents down to the clerk's office myself. Those should be the only three documents in your package on that item, and those have been in your package since December 30th, the day I walked them down to the clerk's office. Nothing new was added to this package at the Personnel Meeting. So I just want to make sure that you understand that. The only other thing I wanted to, there's two things. One is, as a body, I know we've talked about different things being done correctly. If you compared Mr. Corrigan's contract to Mr. Cocuzzo's or Attorney Ruano's, you would notice one difference, and I think that was kind of done in respect for you, Council President, or former Council President. His specifically states that this is a 90-day appointment pending the final approval of the full City Council. That's never been in an assistant city attorney's contract before, and it's in his out of deference to you and the need for that vote. We had done Teresa Park's, you pointed out to us, you wish it was done differently, you supported her vote as a candidate, but you thought that the application process was done incorrectly. Specifically with you in mind, that clause was added to his contract, which is unique, so that when he came before the council, it was done correctly. There's nothing wrong with this application, the way it's being sent out. So I want to be very clear with people, that it was sent out correctly. There's also a statement made on local Spanish radio that he is my good friend. He's not my good friend. I knew Brian passingly, growing up. I actually met Brian in the mayor's office in 2014, for the first time we ever really formally sat down and talked. He came to the mayor's office with a really brilliant proposal of how to more aggressively go after our tax liens, and he brought in a written proposal to the mayor's office at that time. Ironically, we have two law firms doing that exact work right now, aggressively pursuing our tax liens, Capola Incapola, and the other name is escaping me. They're using the exact formula that Mr. Corrigan submitted to the mayor as a courtesy, just as to a new mayor trying to reach out to him. That kind of stuck with me. I knew him passingly, I knew he had Lawrence roots, but his presentation of that proposal back in 2014, and his sincere grasp of municipal law and exactly how our municipal code on taxes worked, jumped out at me. And when they were saying they were kind of stalling out on the process, his name came to mind, and I did suggest that they relook at his application at that time, based on the work he'd done in 2014. So just three things I just want to stress is, his full application did come down to you on time before, on the day the agenda closed. It has specific language in it that it is strictly a 90-day appointment to be done correctly, specifically with deference to all of you. And he's not my good friend. I do admire his legal work, and the proposal that he brought before the mayor was brilliant at that time, so I wanted to make sure that we looked at him where I had that person in mind. So just those three points to all of you. Thank you.
One of the things that I picked up through you, Council President, is I actually watched the discussion, the Personnel Committee meeting that evening, and I remember, I don't remember the detail with respect to who you were representing, but I think you made a, through you, you made a very good point, that you served on the other side of representing a client against a municipality. And what struck me in your discussion was that you have a fundamental understanding, having served as an opposing attorney, of the arguments, the thought processes, that knowing that other side now being a part of defending the city, you have a fundamental understanding of what those other attorneys are going to try to argue to win their case. And I think that is kind of an experience that maybe the at-large counselor has maybe is not aware of completely, but if he is aware of that, I think that may be persuasive in supporting someone like yourself who has seen the other side, and as Mr. Bodie has said, this is not just one item. We're talking about a breadth of issue base that's required in a municipal office. I mean, I've talked to Counselor Bodie several times, and he's telling me how widespread the kinds of cases that he's involved with, not even cases, but he's talking about opinions and providing advice in council, and it's tremendous and it's varied. And I think having, you know, clearly having some labor background, I'm not going to make excuses, that is important, but something should be said for the fact that you have worked in an environment by which you had to work and deal with a wide variety of issues that are being thrown at you. I think every day, as I'm told by Counselor Bodie, you come to the office, you're never sure what's going to be hitting you once you come in there. This is flying, that's flying, all of a sudden, this has become urgent. You didn't think that was going to be happening at that time, and now you're flushed in with trying to deal with something immediately and something you didn't expect that was going to be the matter of that day. So I just wanted you to comment briefly, if you could, on that. I want to make sure that my colleagues here understand what you bring to the table that I think is very important.
No, I don't know if I could be any more eloquent than that, but no, I do appreciate that. And I think the analogy that I used in speaking to the Personnel Subcommittee was that, you know, I think typically, you know, at least in the criminal law field, the best defense attorneys are typically former prosecutors. So I think that sort of translates to other areas of law. It's always very helpful, particularly when you're dealing with adversaries, which we do in this office, to have a grasp of where these people are coming from, the strategies, the issues that they face. I mean, it's just invaluable to have that. And I am, you know, in the three weeks that I've been here, I've been exposed to really a very wide range of legal issues. And I've, you know, I've handled everything that's come before me, and I had an inkling of what the City Attorney's Office was dealing with, but I had really, I did not grasp fully the breadth of the issues, the multifaceted cases that we're dealing with, the complexity, the dollar figures. I mean, it is a tremendously complex process up there. So, I mean, to, just, again, to sum up, in case my resume may not be as artfully drafted as it ought to be, you know, the real estate transaction component of my practice is really just a component. And in fact, if it's not clear on there, I'd like to just clarify that, you know, when I started out as an attorney, you know, I did not jump right into complex litigation matters. Like a lot of people in my profession, you start at a lower level, and frankly, you know, real estate transactional work is really entry-level stuff. And so I got into that, I, no offense. But you'll agree with me. And so, you know, for the first, you know, five to seven, eight years, that was mostly what I did. And from that practice, you know, the natural progression is to branch out into areas that are sort of related to real estate transactional work. So I get into zoning, I get into some contract disputes related to real estate. From there, you get into land court disputes and higher level areas of law. And then over time, I eventually, sort of, I essentially stopped doing the real estate closings, and since roughly 2008, 2009, I've been primarily a litigator. So I don't want my background to be, you know, misconstrued. Transactional work was only a part of my practice. It was a very valuable part. I mean, the transactional work still translates upstairs into the City Attorney's Office. We do a lot of that, contracts, real estate matters, tax issues, zoning, what have you. But the litigation has been a focal point for me, and I think the one case that I may have cited as an example last week was one that was extremely valuable in terms of experience. I had the opportunity to represent a client in a contract dispute against a municipality in western Massachusetts. We were successful. We took that case, it lasted three years. We took it to trial in Pittsfield Superior Court and prevailed before jury trial and obtained a sizable six-figure judgment against a municipality, which is not easy. So that experience was tremendous. That's the type of experience that I carry into this position. I hope to have the opportunity to give back here. As Eileen mentioned, this is a temporary appointment. It is a very, in my opinion, city-friendly contract, subject to City Council approval. It'll only last one year. And so, in my opinion, you know, the city really has almost nothing to lose here. Getting an attorney with 18 years of experience in a wide variety of matters, you've heard from my boss in terms of what I've been able to accomplish and demonstrate in the first three weeks of my employment here. So I would ask that you consider, you know, extending this through the end of 2016.
Counselor Laplante?
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Thank you. Through you, Council President, I'd like to ask a question of our city attorney. I am asking you first because this has to do more with the process. And was there a selection committee in place?
There wasn't a selection committee. What we did have was back in, I'm going to say August or September, Attorney Ruano and I looked at the applications that had come in. She actually did most of the work looking through them. We didn't have applicants that really had experience that meshed with what we do in the City Attorney's Office, so there weren't any that stood out, and there weren't any that were very experienced that were applying for the job back then. This is, as I might remind the council, it is the mayor's appointment, I believe, and I haven't even looked at the ordinance for quite some time. I think it has to also be with my approval and then also confirmed by the council. But in any event, what happened was the mayor, knowing that he had the, probably backtracked even before that, at one point with the recall, the recall has been very all-consuming. It still goes on, and of course, we're dealing with simultaneous recalls. And the mayor asked me one day what he could do to help. I said, "Get me some help." And this was the mayor's response to that. He said, he had already looked at Brian's resume and was going to appoint him, but he's going to move it up sooner because of the fact that I was in need of help. So that's how he came before me, to my attention. I don't think when we had the initial applications in, I don't think he had submitted one whenever we looked at it. And I think he just even said this evening that he applied in October. What we, when we reviewed the applications, it was August or September, I think. I don't think it was as late as October, and we haven't done anything with them since. And it hasn't been read advertised, but it was advertised back in... um, and it hasn't been re-advertised, but it was advertised, um, back in August. So we've been without that position for several months now, although we have farmed quite a bit of that work out.
Right, and this is an eighty-five thousand dollar a year job. Um, given that you saw, you're saying that a lot of the resumes you, you reviewed, um, those people should not be earning eighty-five thousand dollars for working with us, is that?
Well, that's not what I'm saying, but what I am saying is that they didn't have a level of experience in areas that we could use. A lot of them were, were out, out practicing on their own for a year or two, um, relatively inexperienced. We have a very high volume of work in our office, particularly litigation is very time-consuming, and we need somebody who can come in and take on a caseload without an awful lot of direction or supervision.
Is this eighty-five thousand dollar annual, um, salary, is that for part-time work?
No, that's full-time. Uh, that is the same salary that we paid to the gentleman who held the position up until August. The salary is the same as what Attorney Kakuza earned.
So he was the full-time person?
He was, yes.
Not Ms. Ruano?
Excuse me?
Not Attorney Ruano?
Attorney Ruano was full-time also, yes, she's paid more.
When did that change, if you don't mind me asking? I know that-
When did she become full-time?
At first time, no.
I'm sorry.
When did the organization of your office change to including two full-time assistants?
Um, we had nine people in the office in 2003, five attorneys and four staff people, uh, up until, uh, 2014, oh, actually, 2013. At one point for about two years, we had two people, one attorney, one paralegal. Um, it was always part of my goal to make people full-time because that way they'd be accountable. What was happening with part-time people is their, their schedules were unpredictable, if you needed them for something, they had too many conflicts with outside work, et cetera. Now Attorney Ruano does have within her contract a provision that she can take two days off per month without pay to handle her own practice, and she does that, uh, but that's, that's something that gets scheduled weeks in advance so that she can, um, handle those things, but she's still full-time with us.
Mm-hmm.
So every day, presumably every day, she's here for a full day's worth of work unless she gives us advance notice.
Okay, so that has been, there's an ordinance that announces we have two full-time, um, attorneys?
No, the ordinance is silent as to that, but the contracts are what sets forth that it's going to be, it's going to be their, uh, full-time position.
Mm-hmm.
So the ordinance is just say, "The city attorney, the second assistant city attorney and so forth shall serve pursuant to a contract," and then the contract sets forth what the terms of employment shall be.
Right, now how do we know who's the second?
How do we know who's the second?
Right.
When the individual comes before this council, the individual is appointed to a position. Uh, there are ordinance to first, second, third, and fourth assistant city attorneys. Um, Attorney Ruano currently occupies the position as first assistant city attorney, and Attorney Kakuza, uh, occupied the position as second assistant. Second assistant city attorney is specifically labor counsel.
Right, labor. Um, okay, I now have some, so there was no, no real, um, refreshing of the process of going out there and seeking more candidates?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I'm having difficulty, I'm getting a lot of echoing, I'm having difficulty understanding you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll try my best to-
Yeah, it's not-
-to be clear.
Yeah.
Um, so, as far as, you know, there was no refreshing or regeneration of the process, we're just going for the, um, announcement that was made in September?
Oh, as far as I'm, in fact, I asked that question, it was, uh, I was, I was specifically asked whether the job had been posted. My initial reaction was, "No," then I said, "Yes, I think it was." In fact, I'm sure it was, but it was a while ago. So I went back, I spoke with Frank Bonet, the Personnel Director, just to make sure that whatever, that my memory was correct and that everything was, was correct, and Frank informed me that we did advertise it, we, um, in fact, I'll tell you what he said we did. Uh, we advertised it in Massachusetts Lawyers Weekly. Massachusetts Lawyers Weekly is a weekly newspaper, just the lawyers, it's the primary place where lawyers look when they're seeking employment. It's, uh, it's, it's published in Boston, but it goes throughout the Commonwealth to, to, to lawyers, and it reports on cases, et cetera, as well as advertising job opportunities and office space and things like that. So we advertised in that in August. We also posted it on the city's website, and then we, um, Frank also put it on the city's Twitter account. So that was, uh, what we did. I don't believe we've done anything more recent, but we're going to have to. We're going to have to advertise.
I would think so. The other thing is, um, 'cause, I mean, especially here where you have to be specific that the second attorney is the, it, it doesn't say for anyone else, but for the second attorney and the ordinances that I have been reading, is they have to be, um, well-versed in labor law. They, they're supposed to manage labor relations.
That is, that is among the duties of the second assistant-
Right, among the duty.
Yes, yeah.
But it's just-
General, if I could just say-
But it is for no one else-
I'm sorry.
It is for no one else mentioned, but only for the second assistant.
That's correct.
Now, you know, I know that we heard about, uh, our candidates, uh, could work with a tax title, but then, you know, I would have thought, why didn't it, we think of this person when we just opened up a spot just to do that with the, um, that you are not supervising, by the way, that is being supervised by the, the fiscal department, the, uh-
The treasurer's office.
What is it?
The treasurer's office.
The treasurer's office.
Hmm.
And, you know, I would think that if, if that's what we were looking for, it would be better suited at that place rather than-
At the treasurer's office?
Yeah, for the tax title issue, then it would be in your office. And the reason why I'm saying is, you have so much happening with the labor, collective bargaining, lots of collective bargaining issues coming up. Um, we have been surprised with the number of lawsuits that we've lost, um, by employees who felt that we somehow mistreated them or, um, violated their rights, and I know that as the, um, as the lead of that unit of the city attorney's unit, you've had to get out there and do litigation, which then is very taxing on you because we have ordinances and, um, policies which we look to you for language or advice, so, and we're constantly going with that. So, um, I don't see how, well, maybe I'm going ahead of myself a little bit, but I'm just saying, I don't see how we can bring someone in that doesn't have the skills to hit the floor running, um, so that we can continue to get the attention that we need from you. Um, my understanding is also to advise the mayor, because it says to be an aide to the mayor, the second assistant, um, advise them on labor relations, and, um, I know that we've been spending a lot of money hiring people, attorneys, to deal with one issue or another, um, and I would like to see us have a full team, that you have a full team to deal with, and that we could handle more rather than continuing to spend so much money on, um, outside aid.
Well, it would certainly be nice to have more staff. One of the difficulties that I have in my department is it's not as well overseen as it could be because I'm in court and so forth, and I'm doing paperwork, and if you have a deadline in litigation where you could potentially lose a, a very big case because you don't have something filed in time, or you haven't done sufficient research, um, that creates a problem. So ideally, it would be good, and I think the mayor agrees because we've discussed this, it would be best if I weren't doing much litigation at all. Uh, we have farmed out most of our labor work currently. It started off, uh, at a request of the overseer. We've got a couple of firms that do work for us, they're top-notch, and they produce good results. The best thing about them is that they will tell us right from the start whether it's something we should spend money defending, so that's an advantage. With respect to the tax takings, the mayor wants to ramp up the, um, collection process. What's really being worked on at this point primarily, although it, and it may progress into other areas, is the demands and not so much filings and tax in land court, but that inevitably will happen as we go through the demand process and exhaust the remedies.
Right, but we gave aid by adding, okay, even though we're all saying, "Wow, we're being stretched thin here," and we provided aid by saying, "Okay, let's give the money, um, money and provide an ordinance for this, um, person whose expertise is going to be the tax title, and we'll be working under the Treasury, um, Department," although we still have people of our own who'll be doing some of that work.
It, it would be good to have someone on an entry level paid a modest sum who would just focus on tax takings. Tax takings are very rarely adversarial, they're very, um, process-oriented, and, um, you know, as I say, I've said this many times, I don't say it braggingly, but I, I, I have to have some pride in it. When I took over the job in 2003, we had four hundred and forty-something cases in land court. Uh, we're now down to, we went down to about forty, uh, and many of those were ones where, uh, we weren't actually pursuing the takings because of environmental contamination or things of that nature. We've raised that level with this current administration, uh, we've been encouraged to put more in court, we've been given some funds. When we, when this administration came in, in 2014, we had no, uh, active funds, no resources to begin filing cases. It costs over five hundred dollars every time we file a case in court. So we've made progress in that regard. Um, I will say, what I, what I, I guess I will say spontaneously without being asked is that there have been some, uh, tasks in our office that have been, uh, burdensome, one of which I was particularly pleased, we, I, I, you, you may not even know what an S petition is, and if you don't, it's tough luck because I can't really explain it. Um, I don't even do them, I have Susan do them, uh, but she's very good at them. I turned to Attorney Corrigan and I said, "You know how to do an S petition?" "Yes." I said, "Here, can you do this one?" And he did it, and we filed it, I believe we filed it, uh, in court last Friday. He went into court on some other matters and attended to, uh, filing of that. So that was a relief.
And Susan, Susan is our, our-
She's a paralegal.
-paralegal, and she does the expeditions?
She does S petitions, yeah. We don't get too many of them. We've probably done four in the, uh, twelve and a half years that I've been in the office, probably done four, um-
Right, so then that's not really alleviating the, um, the different tasks that you're facing, alleviating you-
Yeah.
-from having to handle these things. And the only, the only thing I'm, I'm really disturbed about here is because I think it's wonderful, and, and I want to thank the mayor for saying, "Okay, I want to help Charles Body out." I think that was great. Um, what I'm having a hard time with is why the second assistant, when it, that's the only one, if you look at the, our, um, ordinance book, the only one that specifically mentions labor relations. And given the, the, the hard time we've been facing lately and having to pay out all these, um, lawsuits that we haven't been able to win-
Well, I, I'll say that the reason he's, he's being referred to you for confirmation as the second assistant city attorney is because that is the only position that the mayor currently has a say, a direct say in, as to who the person should be. It's, it's in the city charter, I can't refer you to the section, but the city charter says-
And it says-
-that the mayor shall appoint certain department heads, and among them is a labor counsel.
Right, a labor counsel.
Yep.
And that person is to be helping the mayor-
I'm sorry?
Is to help the mayor with these labor relations issues.
Yes.
And as we know, when he came in new, he basically didn't handle some of these labor relations as well, and we got beat up for it, and not only the mayor, we did too. Um, people held us responsible for, for what occurred, and we then managed, without needing to, needlessly, pay, you know, people that have sued us, you know, when, when there was talk, gathered from you, from us, um, in terms of advice, that we needed, um, to handle the situation a different way. But perhaps having someone who is well-versed, focused on labor relations, that the mayor has the, um, as, as it's, as it's mentioned in the ordinance, is, can, can work with, directly with this person. And shouldn't we be giving him that?
Well, first, we have, again, I'm not sure how to respond to that, other than to say that we have farmed out the vast bulk of our labor relations. Uh, we've had several meetings, the council and I, um, over the past months regarding issues related to, uh, demands and claims that are made against us. The bulk of the lawsuits, well, let me, let me say something defensively, too. We, we don't, we don't always lose cases brought by employees. We, we actually, I would say right now, we win just about as many as we may lose, uh, but you don't hear about the ones we win because we summarily dispose of them. We, you know, we-
Well, maybe we should, because that's all, you know-
Well, no, you, true, true, but on the other hand, you have to understand that a lot of the things that, that, that go on in these personnel litigation cases involve individuals, and, um, they may not want all those details public. We also don't want to educate our employees in, uh, different causes of action against us, um, because they, because that's providing them with, uh, tools to make fictitious claims, and we've seen some of those as well. Uh, but I will say, in any event-
But we see the people that win, they brag about it, and it's all over the, it's in the papers, everybody, those, those are the cases, those winning cases against us are the ones that our employees can learn from.
There are certain employees that, uh, take great sport in, in suing us. Um, that's just the way it is. I, I'm not sure any municipality is immune from that sort of a thing, but I, it just in, in summation, what I would say is, um, I've given advice on some of these cases, and we're, we're farming them out to outside counsel because we want to make sure that we get the best quality defense that we can, and if I've given an opinion as to where I think the case was, would, will go, and we end up there, I don't want it to look as though I have orchestrated its arrival at that, at that conclusion. It should be, every case against the city, irrespective of the politics, uh, that, that surround us daily, needs to be vigorously defended because ultimately it's the taxpayers that pay for those judgments, so-
Exactly.
So, um, I guess what I'm saying is, we have, we have farmed out a lot of labor work, and some of the litigation that is a corollary to, uh, the labor work is also being farmed out.
But I, I'll say this to you, Attorney Body, with all due respect, um, I don't find any comfort in saying that we have to get the best defense, and that that best defense can only be, that we can only get that through farming our work out. I would expect that we would have a unit of attorneys that can provide the best defense for the city. Otherwise, they shouldn't be here, and they shouldn't be earning eighty-five thousand dollars a year because it's not anything to some other communities- it's not anything to some other communities, but to this community, every penny counts.
Well, I, I, I think if, if that's the case, you have to look at our department's budget a little bit because we only have, right now, if you're not considering Attorney Corrigan, we only have two attorneys and one staff person. And, and that one staff person answers the phone, processes the bills, et cetera. So it's a, it's, we don't have a lot of resources, and much of what we do in our office is juggling the competing demands on the small resources that we have. Doesn't mean we need to, you know, immeasurably expand the budget, but I'm just saying, we do the best we can, and we've been very successful. But, for example, we've got a trial coming up that's expected to take between three and seventeen weeks of trial.
And that's, that's farmed out, too.
That's going to take one attorney, sure.
And that was farmed out.
And, and, you know, frankly, since August, the, the recall has been all-consuming to me, as it has been to the clerk, and in many instances, I can tell you, there's four or five hours a day that are spent going between parties and trying to ensure that everyone's rights are respected and, and protected. We have ongoing hearings. We have a, an argument before the appeals court on what I think is a case of first impression at the appeals court, which is an issue that's occurred twice here in the city with these most recent recalls. It's a, because it's an area of first impression, it's an area that requires a lot of background and research, and, you know, it's, it's going to be an interesting case to argue, but it needs to be argued. We need to know, for example, the issue in that case is whether, and when affidavits arrive to initiate a recall process, whether there is an objection period and a corresponding hearing on those objections. And I, my suggestion is, and the position that we've lost in the Superior Court, is that there is not. So we're in the appeals court. You can't, we've got one case before the First Circuit Court of Appeals. We won a case where we were sued because an employee is alleged to have raped, well, alleged, he was convicted of raping a woman. So we won that case on a strategy that, that we came up with in our office, and now that's been appealed to the appeals court. Why? Well, we attended a settlement offer, they refused it, they, they didn't want the money that we offered, which we thought was reasonable, so we filed our motion for summary judgment, and we prevailed. So when you get to the appellate level of these things, they become very...
And that was a tough one because I remember when it came out, everybody, everybody was asking us to settle, 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 from the public, you know? So I remember that. Now, through you, Council President, I just have three questions for...
Could we try to summarize it into one question? I know that it has been a lengthy discussion, and I want to give you a opportunity...
Well, you know, it's stuff that I needed to be able to muddle through so that I could understand what's going on. First, Attorney, thank you so much for agreeing to jump in and, and assist with the, with the work. But I just think, I mean, just keep, why is this for only one year, this contract?
Why is it only for one year?
Yes.
Well, I think it's only for one year. What we, if you recall, when Attorney Kakuza was hired, he was given a one-year contract. When Attorney Ruano was hired, she was given a one-year contract.
Okay.
When their contracts came back up for renewal, they were sent down to the counsel for one year, and the counsel felt, in terms of Attorney Ruano, that she should have a two-year contract. My contract was sent down to, to the counsel for renewal, and I think it was sent down for two years, and the counsel recommended three or something of that nature. But in any event, I think, I think the reason it's one year is simply because it's a, it's a learning experience. We're getting acquainted. We're trying to see whether the work is of, of the right quality, but also, quite honestly, the environment that we work in up there in the attorney's office is highly stressful, which is why we don't keep a lot of people for very long periods of time.
Okay, so help me out here. They're going to cut me out, so I need to be able to, I mean, I got questions, but you have long answers, too, and that cuts into my time. The, yes, so how much experience do you have with litigation? You say you're a litigator?
Correct.
Right, well, how much experience do you have with litigation? What type?
I've been litigating for roughly the last seven years. Numerous cases in the land court, Superior Court, matters up to the appeals court, variety of matters. As a, as a, an attorney essentially running my own practice, I mean, I am, you know, that's, I handle everything. So it's from start to finish on a case, really. And, I mean, I could, I could cite numerous examples and give you cases for you to, to look at, check the dockets and so forth, but, yeah, it's many, many cases through trial, through trial, to appeal, what have you.
And you say you know municipal law, and that's through what experience?
Municipal law? The majority of my municipal law experience is through, as I mentioned earlier, through my dealings with various municipalities across the Commonwealth on behalf of citizens, residents, businesses, people seeking permits, people dealing with cities on contractual matters to litigation matters, people who file complaints against municipalities. I also served for a little over six years on the Wilmington Planning Board, so in that sense, I was essentially a municipal employee, but it was an unpaid position, volunteer position. But I did get to see, at least from that vantage point, in a, sort of a narrow area of law.
Okay, how long ago did you leave Lawrence?
Excuse me?
How long ago did you leave Lawrence? You, you were raised here, right?
That's correct. I, born and raised here. My, my parents still live here. They've lived here their whole lives. After college, I came back from college in ninety-two. I lived here for about a year and then moved for a job. And that was the last time I lived in Lawrence. Shortly thereafter, I met my wife. She was from the Boston area. We moved close to Boston, went to law school, started a family, eventually moved back to the Valley, but not Lawrence. That's about as close as I'm, I'm going to get at, at this point, but someday, I would like to, like to be back here, actually.
Okay, and you say your labor law has been with small businesses?
Yes, I've represented a lot of small businesses. I've managed my own business. I've dealt with many, many employment issues, hiring and firing of employees, contractual issues. Since I've been here, really in my first week, I jumped right into a case involving one of the unions here who filed a grievance against the city. I conducted a mediation on behalf of the city. I was able to resolve a longstanding issue with the city, with, with the union, I should say, against the city. And that, you know, type of, type of involvement, I think, saved the city a lot of money. I mean, as Attorney Body referenced, I mean, and this is all, you know, these are all policy issues that, you know, have been in place long before my involvement here, but, but a, a lot of the work seems to be farmed out. And I think that's because of the fact that, you know, there's just not enough manpower upstairs on the third floor. I would like to think that my involvement in these cases will, will be able to counteract that somewhat. You do need, you do need specialists for certain types of, types of cases, but basically, what I think the municipal attorney, the job of the municipal attorney is to be sort of like in-house counsel for a business. You need to know the big picture. You have the institutional knowledge. You understand the workings, inner workings of the city. The outside attorney in Boston has a specialty but doesn't really know what's going on here in the city, so you rely on that person, you work with that person, that law firm, you know, sort of a teamwork approach. But I would like to think that, over time, that, you know, where maybe outside counsel may be handling ninety-five percent of the work now, as this office becomes more fully staffed, and I leave that up to the counsel to figure out how to balance that, but eventually, we should be able to take more of the work away from the high-priced Boston firms...
Exactly.
...and bring it into the city, so...
Definitely.
You know, I, in, in my experience here so far, my first three weeks, I mean, I, I'm dealing with, I'm dealing with the unions, I'm dealing with grievances. We have a labor relations matter that's scheduled for, for hearing later this month that I'm going to be handling. You know, that matter...
You already told that you would be handling the collective bargaining negotiations or...
This is, this is not a renegotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. This is a grievance that's been filed by one of the unions here.
Grievance? A grievance?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Though I'm in the acoustics here, not always that good.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that matter is before the Labor Relations Board at this point. We're, we're going to, we're going to do our best to try to settle the matter in favor of the city, amicably, but if not, then we'll, we'll have to have a hearing. I believe the hearing is scheduled for, for late February. And again, a pre-hearing scheduled for, for later this month, so...
Okay, wonderful. So I want to thank you so much for answering my questions. I think you're very personable. I really like that, you know, and having spoken to your mom, I think she's a fantastic lady. I have some reservations because of the issue of the labor, labor work that...
Thank you very much, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez. Councilors, are there any further questions?
I can move the question.
Okay, Councilor LaPlante?
I have a couple of more questions, if you, if you don't mind.
Give, one second. I know we had councilors that have not spoken yet on the matter.
If there's somebody else that, that wants to speak, that's fine, but if there's nobody else, just two more questions.
Point of inquiry.
Councilor De Babdo?
Did he move the question? Called, called the vote, didn't he?
He did. He, he called to move the questions.
He's not the parliamentarian.
So I'll, I'll...
I asked him to move the question.
He asked to move the question. At this point, I think we've had a lengthy discussion. Is there just one particular question? Councilor Maldonado?
Well, two questions.
Okay.
Just, just the questions.
Will you mind summarizing it, and then we'll, we'll end the discussion at that moment?
Thank you. Mr. Bodie?
I heard rumors that Attorney Ruano is leaving.
She is.
Okay, which means that you're going to be left alone without anybody in the office with experience?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corrigan, just one question. The residents of the voters of this city, by a majority approve residency requirement law. Are you, if you are approved for this position, are you going to move into the city of Lawrence?
I would make an effort, but I have to tell you, it'd be an extreme hardship on me. So I have to be honest with you. For a one-year contract, I don't think it would be possible for me to move my family with four children to the city of Lawrence. But if I could just take a minute and tell you why I think that is something that you ought to perhaps overlook, I understand why you have pushed for residency requirement, and, and I don't have a problem with it. I think it ought to be a factor in all your personnel decisions that you make here. I think it's very important. Obviously, unemployment's an issue around here, and I think you don't want people coming into the city and, and taking their salary and then leaving and, and never coming back or giving back. But that's not the case here. I was born and raised here. My family still lives here, although I live at the next town over. I do a lot of my business here. I'm constantly in the city, even before I started working here, in the various courthouses. I patronize city business. I could bring in a dozen business owners in the city to tell you that I'm a regular customer. So although I don't lay my head on the pillow in Lawrence, I, I, I feel that Lawrence is, is my hometown. So I, you know, I, I, I would ask that you take that into consideration. I do respect the fact that you, you, you feel that it's an important factor, but I don't feel that it should be a disqualifying factor if you have an otherwise extremely qualified candidate who may live in the next town. And I'd just like to make one last point, just to kind of sum up my presentation, and that is, I think, you know, I've heard a lot of the issues that you have with my appointment, with the city attorney's office, with the handling of legal matters at the city, and these are issues that I don't think are going to be resolved tonight. And these are issues that, you know, some of which I'm not really aware of before I started here. But what I would suggest is that, you know, this is a one-year contract. The city attorney's office is on demand. Attorney Body needs the help. I think over the course of 2016, you can sort out whether you want to hire a labor specialist or whether you want to go in a different direction. But I would suggest that, giving this a one-year opportunity, I'm confident that we're going to make a tremendous, tremendous progress here with the legal matters. I know that there's going to be, I'm going to make a contribution, as Attorney Body just referenced from Council Maldonado's question. We have another attorney who's going to be leaving here soon. So that just compounds the issue of being on demand, understaffed. So I'm ready to contribute, to give you what I have. I feel I'm qualified to handle any matter that the city may ask me to handle, and I suggest that we, you know, we give this, we give this contract a shot to work. At the end of 2016, I'll come back before you. We can talk about the progress that we've made, and if you decide to go in a different direction, I will thank you for the opportunity and move on, but...
Thank you, Mr. ...
Makes sense to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Corrigan. One question?
Yes, just given the, the situation that we are facing in terms of lawsuits, a fundamental understanding of the law is not enough for this position. So I hope that you vote with me, and, and let's get somebody else that has the experience.
At this point, I'd like to move the question. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the motion?
Motion before the council members as posed by Council Elmonte, seconded by Council Reyes, is to approve the appointment.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? The ayes have it.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I called the question.
I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Mr. Clerk?
The question is, a motion to approve the appointment as posed by, first, by Council Elmonte, and second by Council Reyes.
Yes, I didn't hear it when the vote was taken, so I'm voting no.
Okay, how's do a rocall? Was it unanimous vote originally? Oh, is it, Mr. Clerk? Rocal?
It wasn't recorded, it's okay. Council, Council Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez? Council Maldonado?
No.
Council Elmonte?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council De Peña?
Yes.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Corrigan.
Thank you very much.
If I may, if I may make a point of information for one second?
Is that in reference to this item?
It's not, it's a file specifically, just a general, one quick thing.
Can, can we try to...
That I had pointed out on the application... That I had pointed out on the application, um.
We have to move the agenda, there's quite a few people here waiting, can we do it, uh, right before the meeting ends, so we could expedite and, and for folks that are here waiting? If it's not i- i- in reference to this particular item, I would prefer to do it at the end.
Yeah, I wanted to make that clarification on the application, that the, where it says, um, the address of the person that is applying for the position or to be appointed to a committee, that, um, term of residence be added to the application.
That's something to, uh, for the personnel department, uh, okay, thank you.
Should we make a motion on that at the end of the meeting, so, so that could be replaced?
Could we expedite the meeting at this point, and then, yeah?
Expedite the meeting at this point, thank you.
Definitely, thank you. Um, councilors, old business, we have document sixty oh nine, it's a disposition going down to the, uh, housing committee. Document three eleven fifteen, disposition of one forty-one Hancock Street, going down to the Housing Subcommittee. At this point, councilors, I would like to ask if there's any items on table matters that you would like to take off, um, seeing there's none. There was one, uh, omission, which is document three forty-two fifteen, that was not included in table matters. In our last meeting on, uh, January fifth, we voted to table document three forty-two fifteen, which is a one-point-six million dollar appropriation for water and sewer projects, uh, pending the return of, uh, Water and Sewer Commissioner, Mr. Peña. Um, can we please move this item as an emergency to ensure that it is in table documents at this moment? Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second, uh, those in favor to, uh, have it in the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
One item, sorry.
Uh, it's document three forty-two fifteen, there was a motion in our last meeting on January fifth to table this item, but it was submitted by human error in our current agenda, uh, so since we have, uh, Commissioner Peña with us.
Oh.
He was invited to come for this meeting, if you recall that, uh, so motion was, um.
So, Council President, this is a point of clarification, it's not really an, an emergency, I wouldn't think, I mean, it was just a, an omission, uh, it should've been on here, uh, on the, on the agenda, is that, is that accurate?
I, I would leave it to the council, certainly, um, I'd suggest to the Council President that it be added as an emergency in case there is a question as to how it ended up on the agenda, it should've been on the agenda, it was inadvertently omitted. On my part, I'd gone through the agenda, had not added it to the, uh, table items, uh, you'll call, Council Vice President.
And wasn't it continued?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't it continued?
To answer your question. Gotcha.
Council Alvarez, I couldn't hear your question.
Wasn't it continued the public hearing?
At that moment, we tabled the document.
But it was left open, right?
We, we didn't have a public hearing at that moment, we have to order a public hearing at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, so, there's a motion on the floor, uh, it's been properly second.
To do what?
What's the title of it, what's the title of it again, count, I just wanna make sure I, I can vote on it.
Yes, it's document three hundred forty-two fifteen. The document on the title was a one-point-six million dollar appropriation for water and sewer projects, and it was placed on the agenda by Wa- Wa- uh, Brian Peña, who's the Water and Sewer Commissioner, um, if you guys recall that, uh.
I'd like to. After a motion's been made, Council President, I'd like to ask Mr. De, uh, Peña, a quick question regarding, um, the work item.
Sure. Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez?
I think it might be what he's alluding to, that there were some changes that had to be made, changes that had to be made to the form.
Yeah.
Based on discussion at the ordinance committee, I was just wanting to make sure that he was able to give us that.
This was before, uh.
That we can, that's, we'll print that, uh, but.
This was before the Budget and Finance Committee, and came with a favorable recommendation to the full council, uh, for a vote, uh, to order a public hearing. Uh, but there were, there were questions in regards to the appropriation itself, and, and what the request was for, so at that moment, if I am not mistaken, Mr. Clerk, maybe you'll assist me, I believe Councilor Maldonado made a motion to table.
Yes.
Without us taking a vote to order the public hearing, so it should have been placed on table matters for today's agenda, but there was a human error, and as a result, it wasn't placed on the agenda, and we have requested, um, uh, Su- Water and Sewer Commissioner Peña to be present tonight, uh, to be able to answer a question.
Uh, through you, I, I gotta, I just.
Document three forty-two, uh, in fact, was, if you give me a second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're delayed, um. The motion to table was by Council Maldonado, seconded by Council Almonte, um, at that time to, and my memory of it is to gather further information when Mr. De Peña, uh, when Mr. Peña returned.
Hmm.
Uh, in order to, that the appropriation, public hearing will be supplemented appropriately and correctly.
So, with, uh, Councilor LaPlante?
Quick question, Mr. Peña, is the, is, any state agencies directly involved in this matter? More specifically, Mass D E P, are they involved in this matter?
Not directly, no. Uh, so, a lot of the work that we plan on doing is mandated through the recent consent decree.
Dissent, which dissent decree?
Uh, EPA issued.
EPA, as, I wanna make sure we're clear on this, it's not Mass D E P, it's EPA?
EPA.
Okay, councilors, there's a motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is to?
To take it as an, place it, uh, as an emergency, aye, uh, the aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, um, councilors, can we?
A point of order, Council President, there was also another item that was tabled, um, until he would return, because we didn't have, it wasn't, um, right, and there were some changes that had to be made to the document.
For an ordinance?
The policy issues that we went through.
Let's move on on this one first, and then we'll, uh, review that one.
Okay.
At this moment, uh, at this point, I'd like to make, uh, to suggest that we, there's a motion to order a public hearing for document three forty-two fifteen, uh, one-point-six million appropriation for water and sewer projects.
So, move.
Motion has been made.
Yes.
And properly second, any discussion, seeing, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call, please, can I please get a motion to go past ten?
Motion to go past ten.
Motion has been properly made, and, and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, um, there's a motion on the, on the, uh, a roll call for the vote that was just taken.
For public hearing.
For the public hearing.
Mr. President?
If I, if I made that track slightly, uh, who made the initial motion for public hearing, Council Maldonado?
Council Maldonado?
Yes.
And Council Almonte, second.
Yes.
For public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
The, uh, the reason why I, I made the motion to table this matter was because there were specific questions as to the procedure that is used, so I'm hoping that at the, at the public hearing.
Definitely.
That he would have that information as to how, uh, streets are selected.
Definitely, uh, at this point, uh, roll call.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council De Peña.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Almonte.
Yes.
Council Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council LaPlante. Stay noted, and Council President.
Yes, motion carries. Additionally, we have a few more housekeeping items, um, there was a request by Chief of Staff, um, she's, she's already left. Um, Eileen Bernal, in reference to document two forty-seven fifteen, which is a handicap parking, uh, at Three Home Street, and it was placed on the agenda by Salian and Apayan, on Sep- and it was before the ordinance committee on September first, two thousand fifteen. On September twenty-four, two thousand fifteen, we received a memo from Officer Scanlon, uh, making a recommendation to place this handicap, uh, order a public hearing for this sign, uh, can, I'd like to pull this document from the ordinance subcommittee.
So, move.
Second. Second.
Motion has been made, and second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it, uh, I'd like to propose, and, councilors, can I please get a motion to order a public hearing for document?
So, moved.
Second.
Seventy-four fifteen, motion has been made, and properly second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez.
I just wanted on the record that I'm, I don't understand how we could've bypassed this, um, since we seem to be so conscientious about handicap parking, so, just wanted on the record that we apologize for.
Definitely.
Whatever.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez, um, all those in favor to order a public hearing, say aye.
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 The ayes have it, um, let's move on now to new business, um, the chief is not here. Uh, document sixteen sixteen, it's non-ordinance city positions filled or unfilled, placed on the agenda by Councilor Almonte. Uh, this will be going to personnel, is that the idea?
Personnel or one of the parties, I'm sorry, Council President, for you, these are for non-ordinance and non-ordinance, so I think it should go to ordinance, so we can figure out from there.
Going down to the ordinance subcommittee?
Thank you.
Document seventeen sixteen, Cornish and Bruce Street lighting issues, going to the ordinance, ordinance subcommittee? Document eighteen sixteen, parking, Woodland Court. Ordinance subcommittee? Document nineteen sixteen, Asperger's, Asperger's Works, Inc., five K walk and run on Sunday, April third, is going to the ordinance subcommittee. Document twenty sixteen, Jesus Transformando Vidas, Jesus Transforming, Jesus Transforming Lives, is going down to the ordinance subcommittee. Document, I will skip document twenty-one sixteen for one second. Document twenty-two sixteen, Fiscal Year two thousand sixteen Support and In- Incentive Grant, uh, is going down to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Document twenty-three sixteen, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative, is going to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Document twenty-four sixteen, Fiscal Year two thousand sixteen, Massachusetts Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant, Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Twenty-five sixteen, Acceptance of Donation for Moving Screening, going to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Twenty-six sixteen, Selco Partnership, is going to the ordinance subcommittee. Twenty-seven sixteen, Iglesia de Cristo, Rios de Agua Viva, requests permission to use various parks in the city, is going to the ordinance subcommittee. Thirty-one sixteen, Taxi Liberty License, Authority to Suspend, uh, or Revoke Licenses, placed on the agenda by Council Alvarez and Maldonado, going to the ordinance subcommittee. Thirty-two sixteen, Water and Sewer System Repairs, Constructions and Improvements, this is going, uh, ordinance subcommittee?
Ordinance, yes.
Document thirty-three sixteen, Appointments, City Chatter, Section three point seven, Proposed Amendment to Time Period, going to the ordinance subcommittee. Document thirty-four sixteen, Stop Sign at Melvin Street and Margin Street, going to the ordinance subcommittee. Councilors, document twenty-one sixteen, uh, I received a memo from, uh, Police Chief Fitzpatrick, I know that he was here earlier, uh, and he was requesting that we take this item as an emergency for the acceptance of the grant, uh, due to time sensitivity, um, and I was one.
Twenty-one sixteen?
It's document twenty-one sixteen, it's the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, uh, federal amount, seven thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents, and the state amount is eight thousand, eighty-six dollars and thirty-four cents, for the total of fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I move that we suspend the rules and declare this item an emergency.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second.
Council, any discussion? I actually had a chance to talk to the chief, and he actually said that he's, as long as we deal with it by the next full city council meeting, he's fine.
Okay.
So, um.
So, our next city council.
Can you say that louder, I'm having our time here in session.
Our next city council meeting, uh, so again, just to repeat what Councilor LaPlante mentioned, he said that if we are able to approve it, at that time, we will have to waive the thirty days, uh, if necessary, our next council meeting will be Tuesday, February second, uh, it will be very, cutting it very short, um, but if that's the case, case, okay.
I've got it.
Okay.
Okay, so, this item is going.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear very well.
So, if it's okay with you, Council President, I had a, a chance to have a conversation with Police Chief Fitzpatrick, as long as we have it before the next full city council meeting, the first meeting in February, we'll be fine on that, so we can go through our normal process without having to declare it an emergency.
Okay.
So, he's good with that.
Wonderful.
So, Council President, did he mention why he thought he needed to have it?
It was a.
When he first came to us?
It was a deadline issue, uh, making sure that we met certain, uh, time criterias, but he appears that he will.
What deadline?
Um, for the approval, because it's two different grants coming from the federal and the state.
So, they need to have signs, sign-offs?
Yeah, so.
And, okay.
At this point, it's going down to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee.
Oh, I thought it was more of a safety issue, you know, like, maybe they, they didn't have any, and they needed them right away, but.
Yeah.
If it's, um, you know, if it's the latter part, which is just to approve.
So, we'll move on, um, councilors.
I withdraw my motion.
When are the next, uh? Oh, we have two documents.
I withdrew the motion, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I referred it to Budget and Finance already.
Hmm.
Thank you, Councilor Alvarez, we have two documents before us, uh, these are documents that are considered to be old business, um, that we approved on December fifteen, two thousand fifteen, one is document two ninety-four fifteen, abandonment of portion of.
Yes, uh, the, the documents are two ninety-four fifteen, abandonment of a portion of Kale Out Court, and two ninety-five fifteen, abandonment of portion of, um, Chickling Street. Uh, a- as I was going through the approvals, the council did approval, the city attorney advises that, um, any abandonment of public property must go through the public hearing process. Uh, at that point, I contacted the Council President and asked him to add this to the agenda this evening, I contacted the planning office, they said they're already considering it part of the package for, uh, pending it to abandon, uh, property in those areas, so rather than slow down that process, I defer to the council, uh, wisdom as to whether or not, how to proceed to get this to, for an order of public hearing.
Definitely, so, at this point, um, I'd like to consider having these documents in the agenda, so move.
Second.
Motion has been made, and second, to have document two ninety-four fifteen and two ninety-five fifteen as part of the old business, um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it, um, councilors, can I please get a motion to?
The vote of approved is, is, uh, is should be, is voided, is, is voidable, uh, subject to certainly the council's approval. Uh, the, both votes were approved, uh, without the benefit of a public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the vote and order a public hearing of both items.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, okay, um, councilors, when is the next, uh, personnel meeting?
We have no personnel items.
Okay.
So, I don't know what.
Housing?
Uh, next week, we're gonna have a.
Monday, the forty-fifth, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, ordinance?
Councilor.
Uh, that's if, uh, if the weather allow it, because we're gonna have a later next weekend.
Wonderful.
Okay, but.
Um, ordinance?
Okay, um, Councilor, let me just ask you, um, is any problem that we can move ordinance committee for next Thursday, instead of this Thursday?
The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth?
Okay.
Yes, or no?
I don't have a problem.
So, uh, Thursday, the twenty-eighth?
If everybody's, so, I mean, I would rather have it this Thursday, but if everybody can meet next Thursday, that's all.
Next Thursday, thank you, so next Thursday, at seven.
Councilor LaPlante?
Oh, housing, I'm sorry, Budget and Finance, I'm twenty-seven.
But, uh, the twenty-seventh, there's a small conflict with li- the licensing board meeting, um. Yes, uh, will you consider the twenty-sixth? What a register, would that be done?
Not likely.
Okay.
Uh, we can possibly do it on the twenty-eighth, that, uh, Thursday, the twenty-eighth, that will be ordinance.
No. Oh, it's re- one, no.
Yes.
Uh, the twenty-fifth, housing on Monday, housing only has two items.
Three items.
No, 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 that, no, you were asking about this document.
Because.
If you have your, if we have our housing committee at seven o'clock, you think it will be done by eight o'clock, or seven-thirty?
Seven, housing, and then.
Seven-thirty, you hate half hour, okay, so.
Because it's, um.
Okay, housing on, uh, on, on Monday, the twenty-fifth, at seven-thirty.
But that's not the one corner.
But, no?
That pharmacy, that is a familia, right?
No, no.
Any day, any time, it's Saturdays.
Councilors.
One sec, Council President, I think that we'll have it on Monday, the twenty-fifth, at seven-thirty.
Okay, perfect, um.
Upon the conclusion of the.
Uh, personnel will not be having a meeting on that day.
I'm sorry?
No meeting for personnel.
No meeting for personnel, correct?
That's why she's sending to ordinance.
Counselors, before we adjourn, I just want. Councilors, before we adjourn, I just wanted to bring to your attention that Councilor Mark LaPlante and I are working on scheduling an orientation for all of us, well, not an orientation, but more like a, an opportunity for all of us to meet the different directors. I know there has been some changes in, in the administration in reference to directors. And also present to you the iPads and have a training on Saturday.
30th.
January 30th, at the Public Library. We will have the IT.
Oh, the IT?
Personnel there to present the iPads to all of us. Saturday, January 30th.
9:30 for, 9:30 beginning?
9:30 a.m. So what we will do, this is a proposal at this moment. We will send the information via email, so at that point, please review it and let us know if there will be a conflict at that moment, all right? So can I please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made and properly second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, councilors. Hi, Lisa.